You can be from closed session to open session. Meeting is starting now, please.
Would you like me to read the report for the closed session?
Yeah.
Thank you. So, the council convened in closed session on the three items listed on the agenda with legal counsel and the city manager for threat to public services or facilities, public employment, and one anticipated litigation item. There was no reportable action.
Vice Mayor Lozano.
Here.
Councilmember Farmer.
Here.
Councilmember Campion.
Here.
Councilmember Lamson.
Here.
Mayor Sandu.
Here. Please stand up for Simon Fair and the council. Decisions to the flag of the United States of America and to republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This meeting of the Galt City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. Today's meeting will air Friday, January 24th at 9:00 a.m. and Saturday, January 25th at 9:00 a.m. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any library branch. Also, as a result of a ransomware attack on the city, we were unable to post the staff report packet on the website until today. We apologize for any inconvenience, and printed copies are on the back table if any of you would like to pick up a copy.
Mr. Mayor, just briefly, I wanted to clarify that, again, as a result of the ransomware attack, the meeting is not being live cast tonight. It is being taped and will be placed on the website as the city clerk identified. We just don't yet have the capability of live cast. We are looking forward to that being returned by your next regular council meeting.
Thank you. Next agenda item is agenda council. Any agenda approval, addition or deletion?
Next agenda item is presentation. Subject Winter Bird Festival. Our correctional department, Mr. Solis.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'd like to call up Jackie Garcia, our special events manager. She'll be doing the presentation for the Winter Bird Festival.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Tonight, I'm excited to share with you details of our upcoming Winter Bird Festival that's scheduled for Saturday, February 1st, from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Throughout the presentation, I will be asking and welcoming John Duran, who is an environmental educational coordinator, plus an original committee member of the Winter Bird Festival. This year will be our 13th year in celebration of our birds. Highlights of the day will be: we offer free admission, free children's activities all day, arts and craft vendors, tours to various local preserves, specialty tours, wild animal presentations, and guest speakers. From the start, this event has been connected to local schools and students. I will have John share the partnership that continues and provides youth an opportunity to showcase their talent.
And I want to thank you for supporting the Galt Winter Bird Festival for the last 13 years. We live in an amazing area. California Central Valley during the winter months hosts one of the greatest world migrations, and we have one of the highest concentrations of migratory birds here in California Central Valley, anywhere in the world. Not the Florida Everglades, not the Serengeti, not the Amazon Rainforest, but right here in Galt, right here in the Central Valley. And just 20 minutes from here, you can drive down Staten Island Road right now and see over 200,000 tundra swans, sandhill cranes, white-fronted geese, snow geese, and a variety of other ducks and waterfowl. So, I am so excited for the educational opportunities that this festival brings and the celebration of the wildlife that we have here in Galt. We have a number of vendors, but my focus is on the education components. We have thousands of students that come out to the Casamnes Preserve each year, and we link the festival and the art show with their visits. So, students, when they come out on a field trip, they're invited to go back with one bird in mind and then portray that in the art show. So, we make connections between their artwork, what they're learning in science, what they're reading about in language arts and social studies with the local environment. So, great educational opportunities and a lot of fun for all that come to the festival and visit the festival. And then, behind-the-scenes tours, we have a number of ornithologists and experts and tour leaders who will be getting folks behind the scenes, areas of the preserve and other areas surrounding Galt that aren't generally open to the public.
Just a note on the student portion. Kyra Mitchell, who is our featured artist for this year, she had submitted this artist work last year, and so she has been featured as our winner for the art contest from last year. So, her drawing is on all our brochures, our posters. So, again, her name is Kyra Mitchell. She's been part of the Winter Bird Festival since she was a little girl and has a lot of memories. So, it's, again, a great opportunity for youth. So, our keynote speaker this year will be Jeff Rich. His topic will be bald eagles in the wild and include over more than 150 photos. Rich is also leading a sunrise photography tour and will be signing autographs as well. Just to recap on what John was saying, we offer presentations. This is just a highlight of the few that we have: backyard bird safari, wild things and conservation ambassadors, hawks, honkers, and hoots, and cow waste. These presentations will be offering educational learning, interactive, and live animals will be on site as well. Some new things that we've been adding for the past two years is workshops, hands-on learning, which will have everybody can do bird photography. Sam Wonkey, Mickey's Grove will be doing an event where they're bringing animals where you can touch them, you can tell the difference of the different bird beaks, so they'll be doing that. And we have someone that's doing a nature game workshop, and then we have arts and crafts as well. Highlighted here is our educational insight scene tours. This year, we're offering a Friday tour, which is new, and it's focusing on the wildlife management practices at the preserve. These are filling up, so if you are interested, here's some helpful resources to find more information about what we have for the Winter Bird Festival. We have event brochure and then online registration. Again, we thank you for your time and encourage you to visit the Winter Bird Festival that offers plenty of great chances to watch and appreciate the birds in our community. Any questions?
Thank you. How old is Kyra and what school does she go to?
I believe she goes to Liberty Ranch, and I think she's 16.
Amazing.
In the brochure, there's also a small little bio of her and what she, how the winter bird impacted her.
Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next agenda item is public comment. I would like to before this agenda item, on the behalf of City of Galt, I would like to recognize the former mayor and the former vice mayor. They recognize, they spend, they recognize their service and dedication to the city and community. We appreciate you. I would like to present a plaque. I will ask all the council if we can take a picture.
What about my camera? Are we all, are we going down? All of us? All of us? Who said a picture?
Sorry. I'm really sick, guys. We have to just do what we can. One, one, please. One, two, three. Okay. Thank you. Thank you. John, do you want the box?
Thank you so much, Mayor. Those are very lovely.
Thank you. Next agenda item is public comments. Do you know we have a speaker?
Under Government Code Section 54954.3, members of the public may address the city council on non-agenda items. The public comments section is for the city council to receive comments. Except for brief responses to questions, no discussion or action may be taken on any item that is not listed on the agenda. Please limit comments to a maximum of five minutes. Speaker cards are located on the table inside the entrances to the council chambers. Once completed, for the speaker card to the clerk, those persons wishing to speak on any item scheduled on the agenda will be given an opportunity to do so at that time the item is being considered.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Melissa Newberger, and I work for the Sacramento County Office of Education. On behalf of the Sacramento County Coalition for Youth, I'm here to thank you for not allowing recreational marijuana dispensaries in your city. The Sacramento County Coalition for Youth was created in 2015 to create community solutions to youth alcohol use. Two years ago, with the passage of Prop 64 and the impending opening of recreational marijuana dispensaries in the city of Sacramento, the Sacramento County Alcohol and Drug Services provided funding to the coalition to create a campaign addressing youth marijuana prevention. There is a lot of information about there, about marijuana, but very little that is specific to today's marijuana, how it affects youth differently from adults, or information on prevention strategies. Young people are getting a lot of messages, but rarely the most updated information on the law, how today's marijuana potency is so much higher than even 10 years ago, and how this high potency drug affects a young person's developing brain. Youth also need tools and resources encouraging them to make good choices for their future. The coalition created the Future Forward Campaign to meet those specific needs, to give the youth the best information that we have so they can apply it to decision-making for their future. We try to be everywhere, not only to get the prevention word out, but also to remind youth and adults that marijuana is not safe for youth use and that there are choices, and we want them to make the best choices so they can have a strong future. Consider who they are, who they want to be, what they want to do, what will help them get there, and what will not. So, how did we do that? We did it through town hall meetings, online information, including educational models, modules for parents, handouts, an insert in the Sacramento News &amp; Review, and lots of media: social media, public service announcements, radio, television, movie theaters, billboards, transit signs, ads that played during the 49ers game a few weeks ago, ads that play at the Kings game as well. Youth not only attended and participated in these events and projects, but were instrumental in creating the concept and the direction of this particular campaign. Our concerns are valid. What we are finding is that the more we get out in the community, the more we find out how little people know about today's marijuana. It is so vital that they know things like low level of marijuana use, even as few as one or two times, may change the teen brain in areas of processing, learning, informing memories, and living near marijuana dispensaries makes youth more likely to use it. So, we have a handout with facts from Sacramento County students and Sacramento County youth. It has our resource website on the bottom. All of our materials are free for use, for publication, to take and change and move forward across all cities in California and across the nation. We want to thank you, as a coalition, for not opening dispensaries in your city. You are in good company. Approximately 80% of the other California cities also choose not to allow dispensaries. Youth, our greatest asset, deserve to grow up safely. Your decision to not allow dispensaries continues to create that safe place for them here in Galt. It is the mission of the Sacramento County Coalition for Youth to minimize youth access to marijuana, and less dispensaries equals less marijuana and less youth access. Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa. Thanks.
Thank you so much.
Any other comment by the council?
No. Thank you. No more.
Next agenda item is report by city council member on original board, commission, and committees. Vice Mayor Lozano.
Yeah, we had Secog meeting on the 16th, and we installed a new chair for Secog, and it's Lucas Freericks. He is a city council member in Davis. We talked about the priorities for Secog for the next, for the coming year, and they include economic prosperity, connected communities and vibrant places, and how to look at transportation and housing related to those. Housing is a big issue. We had a couple of folks from the governor's office there to talk about housing and what the governor's budget looks like related to housing. I think that's pretty much it. Next meeting is in February, and we'll also have a, it was reinstalled to the Policy and Innovation Committee, so that will meet the first week in February as well, and I'll report back out on that. That's it.
Councilmember Farmer.
Nothing to report.
Councilmember Campion.
Nothing to report, thank you.
Councilmember Lamson.
Yes, we had a youth commission meeting, and they will be helping with the Winter Bird Festival, and we're planning some other activities. And through the help of the beautification committee, the youth commission was able to adopt Lincoln Road for the next two years as their street, and so I chaperoned on Sunday, and we went out and cleaned the area in front of Galt High School and down Lincoln around that way, and I must say, there was not that much trash to pick up. It was kind of heartening to see that there wasn't a lot of garbage. There was a few things. So, thank you to the beautification committee for working with them for that, and if you see the kids out there, feel free to stop and help them pick up some trash.
Thank you. On June, on January 9th, I attended Sacramento Transportation Authority, STA, meeting, and most of important agenda was on that, Measure A, transportation expenditure plan development. That is the first time I attend that meeting, and from the staff, Mr. Mike Selling was there. I believe he might be having more depth on that. I'd like him to take over. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, maybe just a little bit more on that. So, the Sacramento Transportation Authority staff are exploring the possibility of an additional half-cent sales tax to potentially be on the ballot this November, and they've basically done their due diligence polling and whatnot, and come up with a draft expenditure plan as to how the money would be spent. It's proposed it would generate approximately $8 billion, that's B billion, over a 40-year life. And basically, the split is between maintaining streets and roads, transit, rail, and then congestion relief as well. So, there's going to be some workshops and additional meetings, I think, at the Sacramento Transportation Authority Board with, I think, a proposed action that the board would consider taking action on it in March. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Selling. Next agenda item is information consent calendar. The subject, receive and file warrant for period ending January 8, 2020.
So moved.
The motion moved to by Vice Mayor Lozano and second by councilmember Campion.
Vice Mayor Lozano.
Aye.
Councilmember Farmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Campion.
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson.
Aye.
Mayor Sandu.
Aye. Motion passed by 5 to 0. Thank you. Next agenda item is K, schedule matter notice of public hearing.
There is none.
There is no. Next agenda item is regular calendar, city manager's office. Subject, propose amendment to Assembly Bill 3773 governing a 44-acre Galt market property and surrounding city-owned properties. Mr. Hagden.
Mayor Sandu, members of the council, good evening. This item follows the plan set forth by the city council back in the summer to take a number of different actions and activities, really, related to the 44 acres that comprise the civic center properties, including the sports complex, the Galt Market property, and associated parking areas. And that is, has been the subject of the Galt Market Community Plan, which has officially kicked off, will really be getting underway in January, but tandem to that process is looking at Assembly Bill 3773 to determine whether it would be advantageous to the city and to the long-term funding of parks and recreation to seek some modifications to that legislation. As the council is aware, we own approximately 44 acres that came to us from the 52nd Agricultural District approximately 50 years ago, and that was transferred to the city subject to certain deed restrictions. In 1982, AB 3773 was enacted, which further modified the deed restrictions and specifically authorized the city to conduct a city-operated flea market on the property upon the condition that rents from these uses shall be utilized by the city for parks and recreation purposes in the city, and second, to use the remaining acreage for park and recreation purposes. And so, that has been the current practice since 1982, and really, for the better part of the approximately 50 years that the city has owned that property. Now, as we have discussed over the course of the spring and summer and fall, unfortunately, the Galt Market has seen a shift in how it operates and its ability to generate revenue in support of parks and recreation. And to emphasize that, in 2005, we hit a high point of market revenues, and that was approximately 3.5, somewhere between 3.5 and 3.6 million dollars that was earned from the market operations. Since 2005, on a very steady path downward, we have lost approximately $1 million in annual revenue, and that particular decline has continued essentially unabated for 15 years. And so, we find ourselves at, in a position, at a point in time where we need to ask ourselves, is it time to reevaluate how that property is used to generate income for parks and recreation purposes? Could it be possible that there is a new, more contemporary way to utilize that property for ongoing revenue to parks and recreation? And so, one of the main focal points of the Galt Market Community Plan process, or a adjunct to the Galt Market Community Plan process, is to take a look at possible legislative changes that would provide the city more flexibility with how the property is used, perhaps through public-private partnerships that could be envisioned to generate revenue that is at least as much as is being generated now on an annual basis, but more importantly, that is stable and more secure than what is being generated now, and perhaps without the expense side of how we generate money, which is through market operations. So, in recognition of that declining revenue and the fact that we want to try to utilize the community to participate in developing this new Galt Market Community Plan, we wanted to take a look at the language of AB 3773, seek potential modifications consistent with the original proviso of 3773, which is to use income generated for the purpose of supporting parks and recreation programs. And that could include, I suppose, a whole bunch of ways in which this, the deed restrictions would be modified, and what the city would ultimately do with the property. But what this is not, what this is not, is simply a way to sell the property for a one-time amount of money, like you might with a house. You own a house, you decide to sell it, you're going to cash it out, and you're going to go do something else with it. That's not what this proposal is. This proposal is to take a look at modifications to AB 3773 to see if we can achieve a way in which that property works better for the city and provides long-term, longer-term, stable funding for parks and recreation programming. And so, one of the reasons why this is an information item tonight is to tee this back up, to get it out before the council and the community as well, and really indicate that this is that next step that we have been talking about since clearly last fall, or, excuse me, last spring through the summer and into the fall, in which staff provided eight or nine community presentations to various groups, to various entities such as the school boards, the planning commission, the Parks and Recreation Commission. of supporting parks and recreation programs. Uh, and that could include, uh, uh, I suppose, a whole bunch of ways in which this, uh, the, the deed restrictions would be modified and what the city would ultimately do with the property. But what this is not, what this is not, is simply, uh, a way to, uh, sell the property for a one-time, uh, amount of money, like, uh, you might with a house. You own a house, you decide to sell it, you're gonna cash it out, and you're gonna go do something else with it. That's not what this proposal is. This proposal is to take a look at modifications to AB three seven seven three to see if we can achieve a way in which that property works better for the city and provides long-term, longer-term, stable, uh, funding for parks and recreation programming. And so one of the reasons why this is an information item tonight is to, uh, tee this back up, to get it out before the council and the community as well, uh, and, uh, really, um, indicate that this is that next step that we have been talking about since clearly, uh, last fall, or, excuse me, last spring, through the summer and into the fall, in which, uh, staff provided, uh, eight or nine, uh, community presentations to, uh, various groups, to various, uh, entities such as the, the school boards, the planning commission, the Parks and Recreation Commission. Uh, we held a joint, uh, event with the, uh, Galt Chamber of Commerce to, uh, provide, uh, information relative to the Galt, uh, Market Community Plan process itself and encourage, uh, participation. And, and so this information item is to say that we are, uh, consistent with those presentations, consistent with the information that we have been providing all along the way. We have engaged with, uh, Assemblyman Cooper's office to, uh, take a look at ways in which, uh, that language might be modified and that, uh, we will, we were, uh, intend to continue those meetings, to meet with the Department of General Services at the State of California, to, uh, um, talk with them about potential modifications. And we just didn't want that to be a surprise, uh, after the new year to either the council or, uh, or, or the community. Again, what we're trying to do is, uh, understand the shift that has taken place with our current market, the way it operates now, uh, how we might need to consider operating that property in order to preserve and protect for the long-term, uh, funding, uh, for parks and recreation purposes. And with that, I'd be, uh, happy to answer, uh, any questions that the council might have.
I don't have any questions. I just think that it's, it makes common sense at this point. I mean, you, you know, to, if you take a do-nothing attitude, we, we already know what the trend line is, and I think it's, uh, behooves the council to at least take an opportunity as to what opportunities are out there, or potentially out there.
Well, I have several comments. Um... Well, for one, what I'm kind of bothered by is, we have been talking about this for a while, but there's still no proposal, nothing. I have seen nothing as a council member, I'm sure if I haven't, the public hasn't, of what exactly is being proposed. All these community forums have been, and all this information that we've went out to the chamber, and all this has just been about the financial downturn at the market and, um, what needs to be done to right the ship of the city finances. But regarding this specific market plan, there is really no market plan. We don't have a plan in place. I, for one, want to see what is being proposed. I feel like we're kind of putting the cart before the horse because, I mean, look, we, the council gave direction to allow Lewis Group to put together a proposal to be presented to the council about what the options were that could be done with the property. But what I have a little bit of a problem with, and I've, you know, I kind of knew this happened because I've heard it through little, through channels and stuff, but not officially, is that I didn't know about it, I needed a meeting with Assemblyman Cooper. I personally was never informed that any staff or representatives of the city had met with Cooper and were now meeting with the Gen- General Services Department to, um, look at potential modifications. I have never given, as a council member, that specific direction. So I have a little bit of a problem because I feel like things are kind of transpiring without the consent or the direction of the council with specifics to that. Big picture, yeah, Lewis Group, come back with proposal, let's see what you got, let's see what our options are. And I know one could say, well, we, in order for us to put a proposal together, we need to see what we can do with, with the assembly bill, and I can kind of see where that makes some sense. But it's one thing to, to see what modifications can be made, it's another thing to actually move forward with changing the legislation. So I would like to know what is being done. Are we just inquiring about what could be changed, or are we pursuing a change? Because it's not specific as to that. My other thing is, um, that there's, in, in the staff report, um, it says, you know, we're, this is not intended to simply be the one-time sale of property for a one-time profit, but rather, the concept is to create opportunity for the city to undertake appropriate public-private partnerships that would consider transferring ownership. I mean, to me, selling something and transferring ownership kind of sounds like the same thing. I just, it just feels like a different way of wording it. Um, I, I mean, I, I keep going back to, to the, you know, we've, we've all seen the financial trend of the market, we all know it's the declining revenue, and we need to do something, and, and I'm, and I'm very open-minded to seeing what could be done. But I, I feel like that there's always this doom and gloom thing being painted. You know, we talk about, on one hand, we hear, I heard at one of the community forums, that we're not gonna replace the market. This is nothing to do with the flea market, we're only looking at surrounding areas, underutilized areas, or making the market better, but we're not gonna do away with the market. And then when specifically staff asked if we're gonna do away with the market, it's like, well, we don't know. And then when staff was asked, well, we're still, whatever we do with this market, if this market plan, whatever this mark, this supposed plan that we haven't seen yet, uh, is going to entail, um, still making that money go to parks and recreation, we're still gonna keep that, right? Well, the answer was, well, we really don't know. So now I'm like, okay, so, I, I just, we're not getting clear answers. I feel like, not only me as a council member, but I feel like the public in general feels really in the dark on this, to be honest with you. And, um, what I think happens is things progress to a point where so much movement has taken place, and then when it comes to the council for approval, it's like, well, we can't say no to this because we've already done all this legwork for over a year, and we've, we've, you know, we've changed the legislation, and we've done this, and we've done that, and we spent, and then it becomes to a point where you're kind of, you know, your hands are tied, and I, I don't want to be to that point. I think us, as elected community members, which represent the people, I feel like if the people are in the dark about what's going on, I think it's a bad thing. And I, for one, am anxious to see this proposal before I'm willing to look forward to anything as well as changing legislation that's been in place for fifty years. I mean, the, the bottom line is here too, is we have to understand, we want to make the market better, we can all agree we want to do that, we need to do something to make it better. It still does generate more money, net profit, than the entire sales tax base of all the businesses engulfed. For us to just dismiss that is, I mean, you can't, you can't just not look at that, that's, that's a serious number. So what I want to know is, the transfer of ownership of said property to build retail or commercial or whatever we're gonna do, is it realistic to think that that's gonna generate one point four million net in the pockets of Galt? I don't know. But, I mean, I would love to see the proposal that's gonna show that's gonna do that. And also too, you know, this property was given as a gift to Galt with, with certain intent and restrictions. We're now wanting to change that intent and restrictions. So that's not something I take lightly because we were gifted this for a specific reason, and now because we are sitting on, you know, a gold mine here, we need to do something different with it, we want to change that. So we need to be very cautious, and just because we have an assemblyman, look, I don't know what was said to Assemblyman Cooper. I wasn't there. I don't even know the sta-, I don't even know the specific staff members who even met with them. But what I do know is if somebody went to Assemblyman Cooper and says, the city of Galt wants to change this legislation, would you help us do that? Assemblyman Cooper's gonna say, well, sure, if city Galt wants to do that, I'd be, I'd be more than happy to help you with that. But is that truly what's happening? Did the city of Galt, is this what the city Galt really wants? We don't know. Because we, as a council, represent the city of Galt. And the public nor the council has given direction to say, yes, Cooper, we want to change this legislation. So therein lies the huge problem for me personally. I feel like we have, I feel like somebody has spoke on my behalf, and I haven't spoken. That's just my two cents on this matter at this point.
I, I look at it differently, Sean. Um, one, um, I think staff is doing their job. You know, we, we were apprised that it would require a legislative change, and that would be, require getting in contact with our legislator, local legislator, that makes most sense. I think staff is doing due diligence in making those contacts to see whether someone is, one, willing to, and, two, to see if there is a possibility. Nowhere in this report do I see that we are going to make a change in the legislation. It says they are going to meet with Assemblyman Cooper's office and General Services to see if there is the possibility of making the changes that may be necessary to give the city flexibility to utilize the property, uh, in a fashion which would maximize its benefit to the entire community. There's nowhere in here where it says that the flea market will go away. And, and in the past, you know, it's talked about, well, maybe it'll be scaled down. I've heard that in the past. So I, I think that, to, to speak to your issue of wanting to see a plan, well, how can you develop a plan if you don't know what the confines of the requirements are of that plan? So I think you have to craft whatever the legislation's going to be, or draft legislation, review that by the council, the public, and see if that is acceptable before it's advanced to the legislature. But you have to start somewhere. You can't start with a plan that you have no idea what the rules are, because you, you're, you're basically spinning your wheels. So once you've defined what the scope of those rules are, then I think we can have a chance to move forward if that's what the council wants to do. Um, I, I agree, one point four million dollars is a lot of money. We don't know what the potential is here because we haven't had an opportunity to study it. I, I just think that, I think we need to, we need to take small steps, but I think there's a, I think the step in defining what the legislation is, is the first one if we're gonna go down that path. Because otherwise, I, I see it as being, uh, a wasted effort if you develop a plan and put it on a shelf, because you can't, the legislation changed.
Right, and I, go ahead, Rich.
I, I just have a couple of comments, and maybe, um, Tom, you can help us out here a little bit with this. But first of all, I just want to make a couple of comments, uh, related to this. Um, I appreciate staff bringing this, um, back out into the public forum. The only thing in here that I have, I've seen different is that staff and representatives of the city will be working with the assembly member and General Services. The, the rest of the staff report is pretty much what I've seen in two or three different presentations that I've attended. And so I appreciate the transparency, uh, and not doing things behind closed doors and, and, and bringing it out into the public. The other thing I want to address is, Councilmember Farmer said, um, you know, when we first talked about this plan about a year ago, um, you know, I made a statement that if, if this isn't gonna work in our community, it's not gonna work, and I'll, I will vote no, thank you. Um, but, but I also feel I have a responsibility to the public to look at every option that we have to increase revenue in the city. We've gone through a, a year of presentations and tough decisions about our budget and what it means, uh, moving forward. Um, I, I have no intentions on voting on anything that says we're gonna lose one point five million dollars that the market brings in. I think that's foolish. Uh, why would we start at zero if we have one point five million dollars that we're bringing in now? Um, I would like to see that stabilized, um, and that, get that trend from going slowly going, or rapidly actually going down to, um, to more, uh, stable. Um, the other thing is, um, like I said, if the Lewis Group comes back at the end of the day and says X, Y, and Z, and the public says, we don't want that, then we don't do that. Um, that, that's my position, and I think that, um, if, if we take the opportunity to look at every opportunity that's out there, um, and we come up with a decision, uh, between the five of us, um, that, that is going to work for the city or not, uh, then, then we move forward. But at least we can say that that has been overturned. And I will say this, um, there have been some decisions in the past, um, with this governing body, that you look at and say, boy, somebody should have looked into that a little more. And, um, and I, and that's, that's what I don't want to have happen. I want to be able to feel like I, uh, have given staff guidance to look at every option out there, um, and, and at least take a look at, um, what we can do to increase our financial position. Um, and the, the last piece is just, I'm thinking, i- if, Tom, if you could maybe go through the timeline again about what the Lewis Group's marching orders are, uh, and staff's marching orders, as well as the consultant, um, because I'm still a little unclear, not still, but I'm, it's been a while, and I'm, I'm a little unclear on that.
Sure. Uh, and in fact, I, I think what I'd like to do is, is have Chris Arias turn that o, or, uh, provide that, uh, information, but before I turn it over to him, I, I want to make a distinction. The Lewis Group isn't designing anything necessarily. The, uh, Galt Market Community Plan is wholly owned and operated by the city of Galt and the citizens of Galt. And, uh, it is that, uh, citizen participation process that will ultimately define the Galt Market Community Plan. We partnered with, um, with the Lewis Group back in July, uh, because they're interested in a, uh, the potential of a public-private partnership, assuming that the plan and Lewis can marry up on something that they think that they could achieve. If the plan comes up with something that Lewis can't achieve, uh, they're, they're likely down, gonna go down the road. If it comes up with something that they think that they can work with, then, um, uh, then, then, then perhaps we have the, uh, the makings of something. But that only occurs after the planning process proceeds. And so Chris, maybe if you could, uh, provide some information relative to timelines and what the, what the planning effort has been thus far.
You bet. Um, the, consider, the design consultant, Williams and Patton, has started. Uh, they kicked off, uh, the process with staff beginning of December, and they're currently working on their background investigation and report on the market property. So what that means is, they're now, you know, looking at utilities, uh, looking at current conditions, what the uses are, and just gathering a lot of information to get an existing conditions background report. They've also, at the same time, started talking to stakeholders, and we are treating, uh, Lewis as a stakeholder in this. So as, um, the city manager mentioned, they are just that a stakeholder, not leading the design. The, the design will come from the city and the planning department in particular. So after, or actually kind of coinciding with the background report, uh, they will start engaging the public and start having public design surets and seeking, uh, input on design from the public. We actually anticipated that this month, but based on the IT issues, we're a little bit behind. But I would anticipate in the beginning of February that we start doing some outreach with the public, or maybe mid-February, uh, to start having some public meetings. I would envision two to three public meetings, uh, on design, uh, maybe that encompassing like a month and a half. Uh, once they come up with a design, or a few alternatives based on the feedback they receive from the public, the stakeholder meetings, uh, meeting with staff, they'll come up with a couple different scenarios, then, and come back to the public and present them, and try to narrow down, uh, more specifics. I would anticipate that taking another month and a half, maybe two months. So at the end of four to six months, the goal would be to have some preferred alternatives to bring to council and planning commission and go through that process. Once we have a preferred alternative selected, or maybe a couple, then we start the SEQA process. The SEQA process takes another six months. So in a year, we're then coming back for approval. But during that process, there's time for the public to weigh in on the design surets, uh, looking at design alternatives, back through planning commission and city council, then through the environmental process, and then for final improvement, or approval. And so I would see that process taking nine months to a year total.
So, I appreciate your comments, um, Councilman Campion and Rich, and I do agree with, with a little bit of both of what, what you said. And again, I, I'm not sitting here trying to say that I am not in favor of doing anything to make the market grounds better, or the property better. I know there's a lot of underutilized property over there, there's just parking lots, there's where the Boys and Girls Club used to be, just to name a little bit of it. Um, so, I mean, I would love to see the market more utilized more than two days a week. I, I, we've been talking about this for years, it just always seems like money was the issue. So, again, I'm not making these statements that I've made, I'm just trying to prove two, I'm just trying to make three points here. One is, I would like to see more transparency to the council. I don't want this to be brought to council or me to be briefed on stuff when it comes before me to vote on something. Um, I'm just a little perturbed that I didn't know that, until I found out through certain channels, that Assemblyman Cooper had, you know, been met with, and, and again, it was kind of, I, I just, what I really want to get from our city staff is I want to hear a definite yes or no, that to look at legislative changes, to see what they could be is one thing, but to make them happen is another. I just want to clear here, clear yes or no, that there will be no pursuing to make that legislation change until this council says to do so.
Staff wouldn't ever have authority to do anything but that. Staff has no authority to go, uh, suggest to an assemblyman, uh, or a group of assemblymen, or senators, to modify language that isn't approved by the governing body. And, uh, it, that, that, that just, I, I don't think could happen.
Okay. Well, I just want to, I just want to be clear to the public.
Right.
That's watching, because I think there's a misconception out there that that is possible. That's watching, because I think there's a misconception out there that that is possible.
But let me point out a couple of other things. So, back in July, this council, the, the council as presently constituted, adopted a resolution, and it was to, in agreement to work with the Lewis Group on a number of things relative to that property. And everything that Chris talked about was outlined then. Now, it hadn't started at that point, but we were going through and setting it up to include legislative modifications to AB 3773, for which staff is simply following through on the things that are, that were discussed back in July, have been discussed before this council, since that time, in, in the fall, have been discussed in many public presentations that this very council, the same presentations that this council received. So, while I understand that as, as a council member, you don't want anything to happen that, that this body doesn't approve, that is the way it should be and the way it will be. A legislative attempt from a city, on the part of a city, cannot go forward in the state legislature without the endorsement of the local governing body. There isn't an assembly person alive that would carry something like that, nor, nor a senator. But that, what we're doing here now, if we're going to talk transparency, this is quintessential transparency. It's the ultimate test of transparency, because instead of just following through with the Assemblyman's office and with, with the senator and, we're bringing this back. And if the council, if three or five of you say, "No, stop," okay, we're going to stop. This is bringing it up the flagpole one more time. We've done it many times since July, but this is just one more time to do that. And that's why we wanted you to be aware of and know about, that we were going to continue to, to, to talk with them.
Yeah, and that's just what I'm, just trying to get clarification on the resolution that we voted on, because what I voted on was to pursue what changes could be made, not to make, not to actually make those changes. So, I just.
That's, and, and I think that that's all this staff report tonight says.
Well, this is the first time, honestly, this is the first time in a city council, an official city council member, not in a closed session or a, or a public forum or anything, where we've talked specifically about AB 3773 specifically, not just as part of a larger thing, where we got to do this and that, and there's also this assembly bill we might have to look at. We're talking specifically about this now, and that's why we're getting down to brass tacks here. And, and so, and again, this is not something to be taken lightly. This is a, this property was given with a certain intent, and I, for one, am very anxious to see what could be done. I want to see, what does that look like? What, what could be done? Because I want to, I, I mean, we've been waiting a long time to see that, and I look forward to it. But I do know that right now, that this assembly bill is the only thing really that's protecting, and for lack of a better word, protecting us from ourselves. I mean, because, you know, it's all just speculation about what the market's going to do, speculation that what we can do can make things better. We don't know the community's going to support it, the community might be heavily supportive of this, and of course, we don't know any of this, because the public doesn't really know what we're going to do yet. So, thank you for, for the clarification on that, Tom, and I look forward to seeing something soon. I'm very anxious to see something.
So, I just want to point out that Vice Mayor Farmer brought up that, or former Vice Mayor Farmer, sorry, brought up that the market brings in more than the sales tax, and we know that we have about an 80% bleed in sales tax, I believe, because people don't shop locally, which Lodi doesn't experience, neither does Elk Grove. So, because of the market, we're able to have this fantastic Parks and Rec program that we would not be able to have, but it, the revenue's declining, so we are just trying to find some ways to fix the revenue stream. It may take years to get this going, but we've got to do something, because in 10 years, 15 years, if that line continues, we may not have any Parks and Rec programs, so.
And, and if I could just clarify something, just, the, the market brings in about $2.5 million gross revenue. We have about $900,000 in expenses, maybe a little more than that, in market operations itself. And, and so, the, the net revenue from the market is just a little more than 1.5 million. And I think that that's actually, I'm remembering a FY '18 number, it might not be the FY '19 number, we'll, we'll have to clarify that. I think it, it could be a little bit lower in FY '19. Our sales tax is about 2.5. So, I think the confusion in, in the number is the 2.5 each of them, you know, and it's true, for a very long time, the market brought in a lot more than, than, than sales tax. But that has shifted, and so, we're, the market brings in about $1 million less than, than we do in sales tax. And, and, but remember, that's because for the last 15 years, the market's revenue has just declined, declined, declined.
I also want to point out that, you know, we've all seen the graphs of the market, and I think it's easy to show a graph that shows the market here at 2005 and then declining, but if you look at the market as a whole for the, since 1950, you know, there's been trends, and the 2005 was the absolute peak of the market, which in our economy, 2005 was the absolute peak of everything, the housing market, the economy, everything, and then came the recession. That declining line going downward could also just be a reflection of the, of, of the recession's impact on the market. So, what that line would do if we do nothing, and I'm not saying to do nothing, but I'm just saying, we can't specifically just be looking at that, that line and assuming that it's going to decline to nothing, and, and like Rich said, be too fast or too quick to make a decision to forego, you know, what is a golden goose? The goose doesn't lay as big of the eggs it used to, clearly, but it's still a substantial revenue source, and I want to treat that very carefully, and it's what, the GALT market is so important to GALT, it's what GALT's known for, and even in other states, people have come to me, "Oh, that's where the GALT market is." So, I, on behalf of the public, want to make sure that we make the absolute best decision we can for the market, because this is a one-shot deal, folks, and what we make, decisions we make on this council are going to be affected long after we're gone and other councils are gone, and other, once we do things, there's no going back. So, we just have to be very deliberate and clear about what we're doing here.
And, and that's your staff's concern as well.
Thank you. I have a few comments about that. One thing is master plan and community plan, or what's the difference in those plan and when they change to master plan to community plan? And the other concern is, you know, the Energy Commission, when we get that grant back in...
Yeah, it's been a while. We are way behind on actually the, the market plan itself. We probably were delayed a year trying to figure out how we were going to proceed with it. So, we were able to adjust, you know, the grant application to extend our time limit for the grant, the market plan. So, I don't have, I don't recall the exact date, but it is, we've had that for a couple of years now, so the grant has been out there for a while.
So, so that's mean, when we get that plan, with the grant, we give that contract to the architectural, and there might be, is master plan, there might be somewhere is master plan, then it change to the community plan.
They're really the same thing, it's just kind of a name. I mean, we like to call, I mean, in planning, we like master plans, because it then tells us that if a project comes in independent and it is part of a master plan, we know that there are other criteria to evaluate it on. So, it's not quite a specific plan that has its own rules, it's a little bit under a specific plan, but it's an indication to planning that a project is part of a bigger project. So, when we review that project, we have to make sure it's not only consistent with the general plan and zoning, that there's a master plan that we have to look into. And then, when you're actually creating a master plan or a community plan, this gives you an opportunity to make sure all the properties that are involved in that master plan work together as one. So, they're cohesive, where you have, you know, vehicle driveways that connect to each other, pathways, walking pathways that connect, bicycle, shared driveways and things like that. So, the community plan and market plan, or, and master plan pretty much mean the same thing.
So, community plan, when we, I, I believe we all as a promise, we can be getting lot of input from the community outreach.
Yeah.
And I believe most of our council members, including myself, we also join that, the feedback from the community. And the feedback, I don't know, anybody keep a record as a staff of what kind of feedback you guys getting from the community, which way we think, or we need to go, still we, still not any plan yet, right?
Correct. And so, we, we weren't really taking, you know, ideas yet on what the plan would look like, because we're not there. So, even though we heard some people mention some things, and we do know those, we did have people taking notes, we weren't quite ready to start putting pen to paper. You know, as I talked about in our schedule, we're probably a good three to six months out before we actually start seeing concepts. So, there's going to be a gap from now to when we actually see ideas on paper for master plan. So, I, I think Councilwoman Campion really said something important, whereas, you know, the legislation could really determine what our plan looks like, because if we're, if we don't change the market plan or the, the legislation to limit uses that are Parks and Rec related, the plan is going to look a lot different. So, there's no, you know, we don't want to spin our wheels and create a plan, then that we wouldn't be able to change legislation, so.
No, I, I do understand that, that with the changes amendment to the legislation, but if we, that's my belief, that's my opinion, if we have a plan, and then we can go to Assemblymember Jim Cooper and tell them, "This is our plan, what we need to change it." But sometimes it might be, we go to, to the Assemblymember and we do something, and that it will not work with the plan. I, I do understand, correct, it's, it's, it's though, but it's go both ways. You have to have a plan in order to do the other thing, yes. He might be thinking, you know, do other thing to make a plan. It's, it's go hand to hand. And the other thing I like to mention to the public, I was not aware of, aware of anything, you know, the staff into the Jim Cooper's office. I was not in the loop. And in, in the future, we like to, I know there's a brown act, but we like to, as you represent, you know, that Jim Cooper is very local person, and we like to know what staff talking to them, if there is possibility. And then this time, I like to more much what the community say, we can have a more.
Well, Mr. Mayor, could I add a couple comments? Because you, you bring up some, a, a, a very good point as to, do we pursue legislation now? Do we pursue legislation when there is, after the plan? So, part of this is about timing. Our original desire would have been to bring to this council tonight proposed language to, for, for you to review and authorize or not authorize or change or ask to be modified, whatever it was, on language of potential modification to AB 3773. In our discussion with Assemblyman Cooper's office, it came down to timing of legislation right now. So, they're just beginning their new legislative session, they're in the second year of a two-year session. They have timing in which they need to introduce bills, essentially to, to achieve, to get a slot in, in the introduction of those bills. And although Assemblyman Cooper declined to talk about or, or to offer a introduction of a bill with specific language, they are clearly willing, if it's the city's desire, to essentially introduce something that would be very generic until such time as we come up with language that this council is comfortable with, or that, and asks them to put into a particular bill. But we're on, the legislative calendar is such that all of that needs to take place by, I believe it's the 21st of February. And so, what we were trying to do simply is preserve our ability to work a simultaneous track, both in knowing that the GALT Market Community Plan will ultimately be playing itself out, and that any legislative modification would, it, it doesn't have to necessarily mean that we do anything different, but that it provides the council with the opportunity. And as you and I discussed, I think the week before last, that this was an item coming up for the council agenda, and, and you and I had that discussion about the fact that we had met with, or talked with Assemblyman Cooper's office about the introduction of a specific piece of, of legislation, and that they're willing to carry it, but ultimately, I'll go back to my comments to Councilmember Farmer before, they aren't going to carry anything that doesn't have the agreement of the city council. So, what we're trying to do is stay true to the plan of action that we set forth back in July, and that talks specifically about the need, or if, if, if we're going to do something different, if something different is the idea that AB 3773 would need to be modified, and, and so, that's what we're doing. But certainly, it won't be modified without this council's consent.
Thank you for the clarification about the time sense. But my concern, and to the public, I was not aware that, just before the council meeting, I did talk to Tom, and he said, "This is can be agenda item," and I was, I was not, no, I, I was not aware the amendment, what they talked to about the Jim Cooper's office. And I like to, you know, I'm, there is a lot of other thing, might we turn in order, there is a brown act, but I like to be, we all are represent, and if we going somewhere, we need to know. And then, it's much better, we know, you know, sooner than later, so we can make our decision what, what the best for the city. Thank you.
Chris, I have a question. On this diagram here, you have property F. Why is that boxed out separate from the rest of the market?
Is it two separate parcels?
I can't read the rest, the printing didn't print on my page, so I don't know if it's a part.
I believe they're two separate parcels.
Yes, that is correct.
Thanks.
Any more discussion with the council?
Let me see it. Public comment?
I would like to open the public comment or just the public comment.
So, the first up we have is Robert Crowdy.
Thank you, Mr. Crowdy, come to the podium. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, my name's Robert Crowdy, I'm a longtime resident of the City of GALT, from the west side of the City of GALT. And I'm concerned, I've lived here long enough to know how things happen, how things don't happen. But I want to clarify a couple of things. First of all, based on the agenda item, how it's been agendized, the GALT market is not 44 acres. The whole property, that the fairground property was on originally is about 44 point something acres. That includes this building we're in. The building that was next door was once the police department, that was included. The library, which is now the city clerk's office, was also there, included. And now, this library has moved on another piece of property, which is also included on the fairgrounds property, the civic center, the Chabola Center, the sports complex, parking facilities, Parks and Rec Department building, and of course, we have the small section of the GALT market. So, when you talk about the money being brought in by the GALT market, it's just a small portion. The last time I spoke at a council meeting, Mayor, you made one comment at the very end, you said, "I'll look into it." I had a list of five or six questions, and I'll just mention a couple of those questions right now. One question pertained to all the money earned on the property that's not the GALT market. We keep talking... We keep talk about the Galt Market, how bad it's doing and how low the revenue is going over the past so many years. But there is other revenue generated on all the other property, and I still haven't gotten an answer. Mayor, you didn't get back to me. I brought that information, letter to the editor, addressed openly to the Galt City Council, through the Galt Herald, and I haven't received any answers back. I even mentioned this one. I couldn't believe it. It was mentioned again tonight. Some people in the council might not even know this exists. William Plus Penn Architect Company hired. When? That was one of my questions I asked at that same meeting. I have not gotten an answer back. I had people tell me, I won't mention who, but some people said, that was never brought up, never even talked about. It was talked about by staff more than once. So, was it ever agendized to hire them? Now we're here tonight from the city manager that they're working with them since December. You have to pay someone money to do that type of program for you, and I don't see it ever placed on an agenda, never voted in a public meeting. I think that needs to be looked into. And I hope I can still get my answers back. If you don't have a copy, I'll be very happy to send it to you, but that's another question. Since December 16th, server's been down. I've been asking for public records request just to keep track on when it's going to come back online. As of yesterday, not back online yet. Nobody can communicate with you. You have private phone numbers. Your emails are through City Hall, which are non-existent. How do we communicate with our elected officials? We're going to be making major decisions, and we're starting a new year off, I think, on the wrong foot. Think about what happened in prior years. We have a garbage collection rate that's outrageous. Decisions were made because for planning. Can you imagine the 49ers planning for the Super Bowl without planning? No offensive plan, no defensive plan, we're going to go up there and we're going to win. That's what it sounds like I'm hearing tonight. Kurt, your rebuttal, Sean Farmer, it doesn't hold water. I can't believe you're involved with this, because you were involved with this before this council, three members were elected. This has been going on for over two years. A prior city manager, we want to sell the property, we hear we're not going to sell the property. That's the only reason you change an assembly bill. The assembly bill does not have restrictions on what you can or cannot do with the property. That's why all the sales tax that's generated on the Galt Market goes to the general fund. Yes, the tickets that are cited go to the general fund. Yes, the money from the sports complex, when you have these competition events, goes to the general fund. And how about the property tax, now that the Galt Market vendors have to pay, started a little over a year ago? Yes, there's property tax being charged to our vendors, but that money goes to the general fund. Wouldn't it be nice, before you make decisions, to have the knowledge on how much money you really are generating from this property? The library, has anyone ever asked, what type of contract do we have with Sacramento County with the library? Do they pay us money?
I'm sorry, your time is up.
I ask one last time, if the mayor can please respond somehow to the questions I've asked at a previous meeting, even though it's not agendized, I would sure appreciate that. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Thank you.
The second comment, Chris Brosman.
Thank you guys for the opportunity to stay involved with the community. You know, I did start going to the meetings on this community development, and I'm going to say they were in June, and I feel like I've been kept fairly well on the loop. I will comment that Tom did bring up Jim Cooper in the November meeting across the street at the Commerce Meeting, because I made a comment to him about it and going, why are we already talking to him about it? So that doesn't shock me that we're in there. Really, I've got a couple of questions that I'd like to look at is, you know, we talked a lot about plans tonight. What are the plans to turn the trend at the Galt Market around? You know, I've heard a lot of suggestions of different ways that we can do it, but I've never heard this council, I've never heard the city come out with and say, okay, this is what we're going to do to buck this trend of a downward trend in sales. I mean, to me, charging a vendor parcel tax is kind of ridiculous, to be honest with you. If I was a vendor sitting there, I'd be like, I don't own the property, but some way we figured out a way to get into that guy's pocket a little bit deeper. I would really like to see, I don't mind coming up with verbiage to Jim Cooper on AB 3773, but the thing that I would love to see with that verbiage is, any sale, any transfer of property will go to a ballot to the city of Galt. I mean, you know, we say community involvement, yet we got 10 people here, you know, maybe 150, 300, I don't know, stay actively involved and read our pages. But to me, if we're going to take one of the biggest assets that the city has, which to me is the Galt Park, we need to put that to ballot. And before we do transfer any property, we need to say, okay, voters, are you guys ready for it? And if I was to put something together for Jim Cooper, I'd say, hey, we want to put a ballot measure thing on it, and we're going to put it to our voters, and if they approve it, we want this to have been already the groundwork laid. So, that would just be my suggestion there. Last thing was, you know, last year, I beat you guys up on giving everybody pay raises when we then came back and we were broke, right? Well, this year, I don't know how much truth there is to it, but I understand we're building a garage or taking over a garage or something, and we're spending money there, but we're still broke. Perhaps you guys can clarify that. You know, again, I saw we were taking over some building, we were going to put a garage inside, and yet you guys all come back to the taxpayer and say, hey, another half percent sales tax. You know, hey, let's look at parcel tax raising, you know? This bank doesn't just continue on the public side, guys, you know? The state hits you hard on taxes, as we all just found out in tax season. I don't appreciate going where taxes until I see my government spending the money more wisely. Thank you again for allowing us to make comments.
Thank you. Thank you for the comment. Next speaker.
Next is Jay Vandenberg.
Hi, my name's Jay Vandenberg. Good evening, everybody. I hope you had a wonderful holiday season. I wrote down notes as I went, so I don't know how, you know, straightforward I'll be. But I would like to mention before I forget that the garage that you mentioned actually has rental property, produces positive income, so that's not necessarily a bad thing. I appreciate all your comments. I think you guys are all right on, you have different points of view from both sides. I don't know how anybody could oppose something that's never been proposed, you know, but we should also be concerned about what happens, obviously. So, I have some questions that I wrote down. Has there been any suggestion to what the verbiage to the change of the law would be? Or are you simply asking what can be done? You can't give me an answer right now? Okay. So, who in the city is actually working with the Assemblyman's office? It has not been mentioned. People have mentioned that they have gone there and spoken to the Assemblyman, but no one has mentioned to the public here or to the staff, so that if the staff wanted to ask, they would know who to ask. When will the meetings happen with the Assemblyman or their office, and how will the public be informed? If this is going to be a transparent process, I think that would be very important. And when is the deadline? If there's going to be a change to the bill, what is the absolute deadline to propose, amend, change the bill before it gets voted on in Sacramento? That's all. You guys have a great day.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Gene, are you talking? You didn't, it's blank.
That's what I do. I'm Gene Davenport, live in the city. On this issue that you guys have been talking about, a lot of good points, but if I recall back in July, when this thing was before the council, you guys went at it quite a bit about the length of time the Lewis Group was going to have to develop a plan on this. It was like 12, you guys were going for nine months, and I think, Kurt, you pushed them on 12 months. I think the Lewis Group has it like a year. That being said, the Lewis Group is also the one that said they were going to approach Jim Cooper. Nothing was said about the city approaching Jim Cooper. It was supposed to be the Lewis Group to see how they would go about changing the law, then coming back as part of the process. That's what I understood from the meeting that I attended. So, I mean, I think Jay brought up a lot of good points. I think we need to know who the who from the city is going to Cooper's office and approaching them. Because it sounds to me like, when it comes to politics, a lot of things get done before the actual item is supposed to be addressed. It's kind of already put to bed. And I think that's the problem we have here, and we don't need to go forward with the public having a distrust or distrust against you guys. I think we have to look at this openly, totally open. The one thing I would like you guys to start thinking about including in this process, regardless of what happens, regardless of what we sell or don't sell, whatever we whatever we turn over to Lewis Group or don't turn over to Lewis Group, what income is it going to generate for the city in that moment? And then, what is the cost going to be to move the city, along with the infrastructure, to other places? Because I think that's also really important, and nobody's brought that up. Because I think we need to know what the cost is going to be to us. I mean, people getting taxed for doing businesses is ridiculous. I had a yogurt shop for three years, and the county taxed me for my machines that I owned. And I got $1,100 tax bill every year. And I think it's just ludicrous that we're relying on taxes to survive. We've got to look at smart planning, I think, and I don't think adding more gas stations is going to be the answer. But that being said, I think we really need to look at this and give more public information, more input, because I'm still interested in finding out what's going on with the garbage. Everybody I talked to says, oh, can't talk about it. So, you know, it's just status quo, really. Thanks.
Thank you.
I think Tom has some input to address some of the questions.
Any other?
No more public comment, no.
Yes.
More discussion?
For the sake of clarity, you'd like me to run through a few of those responses to some of the public's questions.
Yeah, go ahead, please.
Yeah, okay. So, not related to this topic entirely, but just a quick response. The transit facility that was purchased was purchased with grant funding from SACOG, from the county of Sacramento, very little city participation, and that was all non-general fund money and non-parks and recreation money. So, it was all for transit facilities. So then, Mr. Vandenberg asked, what type of language would potentially be considered in this bill? And then, consistent with what you see in this report, in the previous reports, in the report that was an action item in July, in which the council authorized the agreement with the Lewis Group of companies, the language we envision in a modified AB 3773 would be language that would protect income, whatever income was generated, new style of income for parks and recreation purposes. And it would envision then that there could be some potential disposition of property. Disposition of property could be the lease, long-term lease of the property for under some type of arrangement, and it could include a potentially sale of the property. But I couldn't ever recommend sale of the property without there being a way in which any sale of any part of the property would generate income for the city on into the future in a more stable way than market revenues right now. And so, ideally, the language we envision is language that opens the door for the city to be more creative in the next 50 years, or just as creative as in the next 50 years as it has been in the past 50 years in operating that. Our sole and only desire, and my sole and only desire as a city manager managing this for the city, is to create or recreate candidly the revenue stream for parks and recreation in a much more stable way, and something that can grow long-term. And if that can't happen, then we might as well ride this horse until we can, either till it drops or we can get it, get it in better shape. Oh, who's meeting with Assemblyman Cooper? So, first of all, the buck stops with me. I'm responsible for anything that happens in the city, and one of my charges, or any city manager's charges, is to make sure that the actions of the council are pursued. And so, again, we go back to the July action, talked about a lot of things kicking off this Galt Market Community Plan, as well as exploring modifications with AB 3773. So, me and some members of my staff, Chris Arias, myself, Armando Solis, and Amy Mendez, met with Assemblyman Cooper's office. The initial in-person meeting was just to assess, is this something that you'd be interested in doing? If the city were to come back to you and be interested in pursuing a legislative modification, is that something you would be interested in doing? And the answer was affirmative, that they would, they would help us. I think it's all based on the details and ultimately, what the council authorizes to have happen. And how will the public be informed? I think that was essentially the basis of your question. It'll be in this type of a process, as well as through the Galt Market Community Plan process, that will be very public, advertised, promoted as best we can. I hope that we have several hundred people participate, as opposed to 10 or 15 or 20, which, but, you know, we'll do our best to get the word out. And then, as far as legislative, any potential legislative modification, that has to come right back through the city council. And ultimately, they have to say yea or nay to any potential language. Again, it would be anything, any placeholder that Assemblyman Cooper might put out there is simply, would simply be that a placeholder until such time as the council authorizes specific language to be included in a bill. And then, when is the deadline? Is that for legislation?
Yeah, but I mean, if you have to have it in by May, and you wait till June, you know, you messed up, and you have to wait a whole year.
Well, okay, no, good question. And that was what I was trying to get with the legislative calendar, and so, thank you for following up on that. So, the legislature itself has a calendar. You need to pull a title by this date. You need to pull, you know, or submit the legislation to legislative council by this date. And one of those days, the drop dead date on including any piece of legislation before the legislature during this upcoming session is February 21st, I believe. I believe that I have that date correct. And so, we want to be able to have all that. Now, the language of that bill may change back and forth. It has to go through committee, it has to go through all of that. And so, the language can change literally right up until the probably 24 hours before they vote on it in the end. And but that's, that's just legislation, I'm pulling that from legislation 101, that's just the reality of legislation. One thing I would offer about the properties over there, and AB 3773 in particular, is there was another time in our past where the city had a creative idea and went to get legislative approval for that. And that's how AB 3773 was born. The question is, The question is, is it time to provide for additional opportunity? Then, so I think I touched all your questions. And then, Mr. Danvport added, or asked, I'm sorry, maybe you didn't have a question. I think you had some, you had some, you offered some advice, which was income generated and at what cost to the city. And those are, what, the reason why I had in my mind to respond to that is that one of the items that we will be undertaking, again, on a simultaneous track. So we have the Galt Market Community Plan moving forward. We have the potential of legislation, exploring legislative change as a separate track. And then, as an additional track, we have a risk assessment of the current market. And that risk assessment will evaluate its operational status as it exists today, and what might be done to take a look at reinvigorating the market. And so, that will be completed in tandem with the Galt Market Community Plan, and I think that it will likely answer some of those very questions. And then, Mr. Crowdy asked some questions, and I'll, a couple of them I might not be able to answer right from here, but we'll get a response. Williams and Patton issue, Williams and Patton is a, well, I'll let Chris answer that, actually. But they're a, they're working through one of our consulting firms.
Yeah, basically, council did, the previous council gave us authority to use our supplemental planning services for the Energy Commission grant in general. So, they are working as planning for, you know, the Corium Boulevard Master Plan, the Climate Action Plan, and then the Galt Community Plan. So, they hired Williams and Patton as a subcontractor to work with them. And they had indicated that that would be, the consultant at the time was, in that language with the previous council, shown as a to-be-determined, that we didn't know. The subcontractor working on the Corium Boulevard Master Plan is OmniMeans or GHD, but we just didn't have a defined consultant at that time. And then, staff had gone through a process to interview consultants to bring on Williams and Patton. But again, council gave us authority for our planning consultant, Rainey Planning and Management, as the lead planning firm working on the project.
Any other discussion among his council member?
Just, so, Tom, you were going to try to get Mr. Crowdy some additional answers for the other things that he made?
Well, the other items that he asked, that I'm looking at here, the property tax that he spoke about for the vendors, that's something that's called possessory interest tax. And that's not city-generated. That was the county coming to the city and saying, hey, you're renting these spaces, and whenever you rent government property to a private party, that private party is subject to possessory interest tax. I've dealt with that for eons in leases for facilities. For instance, the transit facility. Mr. Vandenberg made the comment that we have lease income, and that's true. I think we have three or four lessees in that property that will generate income. It's now owned by a government entity, the city, and they will be subject to possessory interest tax under the laws of the state of California. It really is just another way at obtaining property tax for the county. And it's legitimate. It isn't particularly popular, but it is within the legal provisions of the state, and it is something that's imposed by the county and not the city. The sales tax, he was asking about questions about sales tax generated. I don't have those figures, but we can try to determine that. And then, the sports complex fees, my understanding is that all the sports complex fees go into Fund VI. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
That includes the Aquatic Center also. All of those funds go into, including the rental of the community centers.
Mr. Crowdy, I can give you a couple of minutes, if you can come to the podium, and thank you.
It can be really confusing for people that are not knowledgeable in the accounting field. When you talk about the property tax, for example, that was something that the city could have occurred, and they chose not to. I did talk to the state myself about that when it occurred. But that money does go to the General Fund, as many other monies generated on this fairgrounds property go to the General Fund. And it would be nice for all of us to know, just not myself, but for you, the council, people in the city, to understand how much money is being generated other than just the Galt Market. Because there is money. When I mentioned the library, I don't think anyone understands that one. I even tried to get a hold of the library people. When you try to contact the county, it's as difficult as contacting you when the server is not working. So I just want to clarify again to the city's staff, I'm looking for the total revenue that's generated on the fairgrounds property to the city in one form or another. That's all just, what's total revenue? It'll give you a better picture, and how much money is really being generated if you're trying to make a decision about a business, whether you're going to foreclose, or give up your business, or expand or reduce, or fire employees. You need to know what your revenue stream is and your expense stream. So I'm looking for that revenue stream.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Crowdy. All right, next agenda item is update on ransomware attack. Mr. Haggen?
So as the council is aware, and painfully, the members of the community as well, the city was, suffered a ransomware attack on December 16th. And the attack encrypted the city's computer system, demanded a ransom be paid for release of the encryption. And as a result of that encryption, none of the city's systems were accessible to us. And some of that remains today. Much of it has been remediated, and I'll talk a little bit about that as I walk through this report. Now, the city did not pay a ransom, we did not entertain a ransom. And we didn't because paying a ransom does not remove the ransomware from your system. Your system is forever compromised once the malware hits the system itself. And so, we didn't feel, and in consultation with the Department of Homeland Security, the FBI, the Office of Emergency Services at the state, we did not feel that we could get a guarantee, and there was, there has been no experience to date that these other entities are aware of, where bad actors guaranteed good actions as a result of paying the ransom. And so, we simply didn't do that. We did file a claim under the city's cyber insurance policy with the Northern California City's Self-Insurance Fund. That was filed the day of the attack. We notified the Federal Bureau of Investigation the day of the attack. The FBI asked that the California Office of Emergency Services respond to the city and assist us, because OES recognizes that this is akin to any type of physical disaster happening to a city, a county, or the state. And they have a team that they can deploy to help in the initial damage assessments and recovery efforts. And so, they were on-site on December 16th. On December 20th, the Department of Homeland Security dispatched a team of professionals to the city to help us assess how we would recover, providing us enough time to have salient information, not all of it, but salient information relative to the attack. And then, DHS, or, excuse me, yeah, DHS, Department of Homeland Security, was looking prospectively, trying to help us determine a path forward for recovery, so that we could mitigate attack risk as much as possible. Now, one of the important issues that they imparted upon us, and it was a difficult lesson to learn, but they were clear in it, is that there is no way to mitigate, to mitigate risk of ransomware attacks completely. It's not possible to do that, except if you give up your technology, I suppose. And so, what they were here to do was to help us understand means and methods by which we could harden our system for the future to mitigate risk to an acceptable level. The extent of the damage to the city's hardware and software systems was vast. It was the quick action on the part of information technology staff, at the point at which they were called and consulted, that preempted additional attacks on additional systems within the city. And we know that because the forensics analysis that was completed for us by a firm from Virginia shows that the point at which non-attacked systems were unplugged, at that moment in time, the attackers were trying to get into those systems. And the attackers only failed because of the actions of information technology staff to do everything they could to take the system down in a way that would segment the system So, we ended up with a lot of damage across a lot of systems that required a lot of work in the ensuing weeks. The forensics analysis itself, that type of analysis that tells us how the bad actors got in, where the bad actors went in the system, did take some time, given the size of our system, the number of systems attacked, and getting down to a granular level, computer by computer, USB, whatever you call those things, flash drives by flash drive, to make sure that those didn't contain malware. So, going forward, we have rebuilt the system. We've rebuilt it in the, under the recommendation, or with recommendations from Homeland Security, from CalOES, and from our forensics experts, in a way that we hope will ultimately mitigate risk down to the lowest level. One of the things that we also learned as a part of this attack is that one of the common denominators in all of these efforts is human interaction with the computer. And so, part of what we understand going forward is a need for consistent, ongoing training that keeps up with the different ways in which bad actors try to fish around and get you to respond to emails. The emails, you know, back in the day, you could spot them a mile away. It was bad grammar, incorrect spelling, and things like that. Today, they're mimicking FedEx and other companies, you know, that may have a tracking number. You get a very believable-looking email that tends to indicate that it's truly from a legitimate entity, when in fact, it's not. And when you click on it, or you click on the, you know, something in the email, now you have exposed your system to intrusion by an attacker and the placement of malware. And that's public, that's private, that's at the individual level. The effort and sophistication of hackers is unfortunately very good, and they are coming up with more and more ways to try to lure people in. Clearly, 900 agencies, more than 900 agencies were, public agencies were attacked with ransomware in the last calendar year, in 2019. We saw just after January that the city of Las Vegas became one of the most recent victims. School districts, small and large, are prey to these ransomware attackers. And so, our effort at building an infrastructure and building it diligently in coordination with experts in the field and federal authorities is our effort to come back with a system that will serve our public, provide services to the public in a way that ensures, or ensures to the extent possible, I should say, that we're protected from those, from any future attack. The total cost on our ransomware attack right now is something more than $758,000. And that's everything from hardware, software, to the types of professionals we had to engage to help us recover. Fortunately, we'll be looking to our cyber insurance policy for coverage under this. The city will have a minimum of a $50,000 self-insured retention. You can think of that as a deductible. But we are certainly looking for the coverage under the policy, given the expenses we incurred responding to that. That really, oh, I suppose then, the next thing is that for most of the city, all of these efforts to bring the systems back are staged events. You have the find-out-what-happens stage. You have then the recovery stage, where you're assessing, what do you need to buy? What software, what new softwares are you going to have to procure? How are you going to access your backups? We had good backups. I feel very fortunate that the Information Technology Department worked very hard in the previous couple of years to ensure that the backup system we had was contemporary and was active. The hackers did their best to foul that, but fortunately, they were unable to reach our backup drives themselves. They did other things to disconnect things from backing up and the like. But all of these things are staged. It takes time, and each of those systems had to physically be rebuilt, both in putting new hard drives into servers, and then building up those new servers with the requisite software. And the information technology folks worked every day from December 16th, except for Christmas and this past weekend. And they have returned email to the city. We're now cityofgalt.org, as opposed to the previous nomenclature. And they have returned operational availability to the previous, essentially, the backup information that was held in our system that is Microsoft Office-type products. There's still additional work to do. We have additional work in hardening the police department and in bringing back some of the softwares that are used in the police department themselves. But all of the desktops have been redeployed to the various departments. And so, we've come a long way. It has been a period of time. It has been a period of time, and, you know, going on where I think we started our fifth week, this week, of dealing with the aftermath of the attack. But we do have the basic elements of our system back up. And I think that that is in large part to the efforts of our IT manager, Willis Marlin, who is in the back of the room. You can wave, Willis. You know, I'm not sure he got any days off, but, you know, or any, I'm not sure he took Christmas off or any other time. He was here nearly round the clock, trying to plan for what had to happen next, plot out what systems they could bring up and when, what were important systems, consulting with departments, trying to make sure that we did all of this in a new way that didn't exist in this city, you know, from a structural standpoint prior to the attack. And balancing all of that with the weight of everybody looking at you, thinking, when's my computer going to be back, is quite a lot of pressure to bear, but Willis did a good job. And we will continue in the weeks ahead to bring back those remaining elements that we can bring back of what operated in our previous system. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions that the council might have.
I just want to make a comment, not really a question. Thank you, Tom, for the update. And it's important for the public to understand, and I've been trying to get this word out there, like, on social media and people I talk to in person, that, you know, we couldn't be as forthcoming with information as we would have liked to during this, that people approached me saying, what's going on with this? Where are we at? Because the agencies that were involved, you know, there's, it's a very delicate situation. And because of the security measures and the risk involved while we were getting ourselves up and running, which we're still doing at this time, that we just couldn't put out, it was kind of on a need-to-know basis. But I want to let you know that the council, as your elected representatives, were briefed consistently, you know, almost probably every other day, long. If you know how Tom talks, imagine texts from Tom, they're really long. So, updates on everything that's going on. So, we were being briefed on what was going on. So, it's not like we were kept in the loop. And as your elected officials, I trust that you would trust in us to be on top of those updates, and they were very thorough. And so, I just want to thank Tom for keeping us in the loop on that, and hopefully, we're on the backside of this thing now, this time.
And you are right. One of the, one of the things that hackers want to look for is information about your system, because it gives them ideas on how to hack it. And so, that is something that, given this attack, we elevate to a security risk and concern. And so, we, you know, we use Microsoft Office software, you know, everybody does, or a lot of people. But beyond those sorts of things, it's not information that we readily share because it can be used to cause more problems.
Thank you.
I just want to thank Willis and thank your staff, because I know someone came running over here and did some stuff in the middle of the night, so I know it's been long and hard. And I don't know, does he get a day off anytime soon? Thank you.
Anybody, any?
Just thank you for the report, Tom, and thank you to Willis and your crew, and Ms. Tyson, for working hard. I know I was here one day shortly after Christmas, picking up mail, and you guys were here working hard. And so, really appreciate it and appreciate the effort and the willingness to bring other entities in to help manage it, I mean, just because it's such a large issue. So, thank you.
And thank you, Vice Mayor Lozano. Claire Tyson, our finance director, who oversees finance and IT, she was here as much. She, you know, really trained to shepherd the process as well and make sure that we had a clear path forward on being able to acquire the systems we needed to acquire.
A couple of comments. First of all, I would like to thank you, the city manager. I see him, he was working on a Christmas Eve, and he was here on a New Year, day or day before. And I also like to thank you, all the department. You know, when the computer down, we, in these days, we have nothing to do. And all these departments, thank you, they process everything possible manually. And I ask a special thank you for information technology. They was here more than 12 hours. Thank you. Thank you.
Receive information regarding the December 16th, 2019 ransomware attack and approved by motion, emergency purchases in support of the city's information technology recovery efforts.
So moved?
Second.
Motion moved by Councilmember Lamson, second by Campion.
Vice Mayor Lozano?
Aye.
Councilmember Farmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson?
Aye.
Mayor Sandu?
Aye. Motion passes by five to zero. Our next agenda item is Finance Department. Revenue enhancement for fiscal sustainability.
I think Tom and I are both going to work a little bit on this one. So, what we bring before you is the next phase of the evaluation of the city's budget, the trends, where we sit as far as fiscal sustainability. And so, just a brief background, we've been looking at this financial sustainability as a long-term goal. We've been working on this diligently through the summer and through the fall. We modified landscape contract. These are the significant items with a significant cost savings. We conducted, you, these meetings, conducted in-depth review of parks and rec, lighting and landscaping, and general funds. We adopted a budget and service level reductions that balanced the fiscal year, 2019-20 budget through June 30th. And we considered and approved modifications to the city's fee schedules. So, that was two different items that council looked at, reviewed, and took action on. This schedule that you've seen before on the parks and recreation, this is the segmentation of parks and rec activity versus market versus the total fund 06. This gives you, one of the questions earlier today was, what is the revenue generated from these activities? And this schedule gives you those revenues, charges for services in the first column, parks and recreation, and other charges are right there. That fund also receives contributions from the general fund, and that's listed, the 1.2. These are the budgeted numbers from 1920, so we don't have final numbers, obviously. But this shows kind of some of the numbers you were discussing earlier, the market net numbers of 1.4 and the total fund six of 4.6. So, I think these are numbers that have been referred to earlier tonight, and this is just kind of a refresher of that. The big part of this is that the general fund continues to support the fund six activities, parks and rec, to the tune of 1.2 this particular budget, and then it continues to rise.
I have a quick question, Ms. Tyson. So, on the, on this slide here, earlier, we had a community member, Mr. Crowdy, ask about all of the income from the market, I'm sorry, from, not the market grounds, from all of the property that the fairgrounds was on. Is that all included in this?
All of them, all of the property that's generated through parks and rec on that property is in this. So, that includes, that does not include things that are general services, types of revenue that would not be included in, under this.
Okay.
But all of those charges for services, the rents, all of that's in here.
What would be some of those general services that you described that wouldn't be included in this, that took place on that property?
So, any kind of sales tax that's generated is sales tax for the purpose of general services, which is not specifically parks and rec, things like your police services, that sort of thing. So, those, the way we receive that information on sales tax does not come through segmented in that way. Threats to the general fund. We've talked about these before, but I wanted to kind of show these for the community and the council, kind of a reminder. We have the continued loss from the revenue. We've talked about that on an ongoing basis. Lighting and landscape districts do not provide sufficient funds to sustain long-term costs and service levels. Failure to replace the value of lost revenue and increased costs will continue to create parks and rec LLD deficits that the general fund is really not able to cover with existing revenue. The parks and rec LLD deficits are being replaced by general fund. And if, as a matter of ongoing policy, that is to continue, additional revenues will be required to maintain other city services in the long term. In other words, without the revenues to maintain the services and maintain parks and rec and LLDs, services would be reduced. Current deficits funded by general fund are somewhere between 1.3 and 1.5 annually. And what, where those numbers come from is your five-year long-term plan. Cities will need to solve, the city will need to solve this problem in fiscal year 2021 and 2122, because that continues that downward deterioration. Sales and property tax currently in place are not and will not keep pace with the current deficit or declining market revenues. So, we know that from the trends we've seen before. And you're all familiar with this slide? Excuse me. This is what Tom had talked about earlier, of the difference between 2005 and where we are now. And basically, what this reflects is that there have been efforts along the way. You can see the upturn, big strides to improve market operations. And then it continues with, basically, the market conditions continue to slide this down to where the deficit now is somewhere around $1 million each year. And although lighting and landscape are smaller numbers, in these deficits, the trend is still the same. The trend is that two of the lighting and landscape districts are already in the negative in deficit. General fund is providing that gap to make those solid. And Fund 37 continues to deteriorate also. So, how will financial sustainability occur? We continue to work on cost containment, as you've seen through the efforts through the summer and fall, or, yeah, summer and fall. And we'll continue to do those reductions as we can. We will also need to enhance and develop long-term revenue sources, which is where we are now. So, if you recall, when we originally started this conversation, we talked about short-term measures, midterm measures, and long-term measures. The short-term were the current year budget cuts. We took a pretty good slice on that, $1 million. The midterm was fee increases to increase some of those revenues to be more sustainable. And now, the long-term is to look at, how do we fill $1 million and a half every year? And that has to come from some kind of revenue source or reduce services to the community. Revenue changes of this magnitude generally require voter approval. And so, in this conversation, our target is 1.4, but really, it's a range that we showed. Excuse me. So, revenues generally come from multiple kinds of sources. Fees for services, these should be rates sufficient to cover cost of services, such as operating costs, building, use, and maintenance, et cetera. Council took action in early December to adjust these fee levels. We can continue to do studies, and we will, to look at what the appropriate fee levels are. Those fees come back to this council through the budget process annually. So, you'll see those again in short order, actually. Fees for parks and recreation programs were looked at by the council between hard costs or full costing. And council approved some modifications in, on November 5th. Excuse me. Fees for services are not enough, however, to solve the deficit, as the cost of maintaining parks, lighting, and landscape continue to increase. The market revenue is expected to continue to decline over time. So, that's kind of the landscape of where we are, the efforts you've already made, to try and make some corrections in that area. So, we want to bring forward to council some big-ticket items as far as correction of the revenue decline that's already been occurring. We've, the city has used general fund reserves for years to try and kind of put the finger in the dyke, but we're running out of those reserves. So, one of the options that we've done some analysis on is a sales tax option. Sales tax growth under the current rate will not provide the level of year-over-year revenue increase to remediate the city's financial constraints. So, that's kind of a theme on all of these. We don't have sufficient resource in this area to solve the problem. Sales tax is collected by the state and distributed to state counties and cities. GALT sales tax is currently 8.25. That's made up of 7.25 that's statewide, 0.5 that's county, that's the Measure A tax, and a 0.5 that's a special tax for the GALT, and that's public safety, that's the measure R. GALT averages, now, these sources are coming straight from the state. GALT average sales tax per capita is around $90 annually. Average in the county is 202. So, as far as per capita, we're kind of way low. Part of that has to do with the economic dynamics here, as we talked about before. Part of that has to do with rate. GALT rate was higher at 8.5, but in 2017, it was reduced through the completion of property, Proposition 30 at the state level. So, it was higher, but it wasn't higher money coming into the city, it was higher money coming into the state. So, if the city were to increase its sales tax by 0.25%, that sales tax increase is generally an increment of 0.25. The increase to the city of GALT would be around $770,000 a year. The increase to the city of GALT would be around 770,000 a year. What that means is that that would get you about halfway there. But this action would take an evaluation for the appropriate tax level by specialized services and, and would require voter approval at a regular general election in the fall. So that's one option. Another option is something the city has not done, although many cities have, and that is a parcel tax. Parcel tax is generally a fixed amount assessed to property owners to generate revenue for schools and city services above the limitations of property taxes, which are based on assessed value. Currently, the city does not assess a parcel tax. So parcel tax is generally a fixed rate, whereas property taxes is a factor of your property value. So the potential enhancement to this, an example is for every $100 of annual fee for each parcel, it would add approximately 790,000 for general fund services. You could do it on a percentage basis. It's, it's a little more tricky and not normally done that way. But we put in the 0.1%. What does that look like in numbers? It's 217,000. This action, again, would require voter approval. There are some nuances to this one also, which involve whether a property tax, whether the city would want to look at eliminating or modifying some of the lighting and landscape services, the taxes on that in place with, with parcel tax instead, or would it be in addition to? Those are considerations that would need to be kind of fleshed out with the help of some special consultant services specializing in these kinds of matters. Again, the factor of how much that would be, would be also based on whether that alters your LLDs or not. I'll bring you a little more information on that. CFD and LLD revenue. Community facilities districts, city is currently evaluating the possibility of CFD for Liberty Ranch development and other new developments throughout the city. Do we continue down that path? Do we, do we take a different route and, and look at parcel tax? These are things that could be considered. Individual CFDs, they're currently, they're kind of a patchwork of revenue, but they don't, they're not consistent over the entire city area. Northeast and Northside, LLDs do not cover their costs right now by the charts. Would a different approach be appropriate for these areas instead of an LLD? That's something to be considered. The other option is a citywide CFD, whether that's something we want to pursue more diligently. So they're kind of the nuances, that one. Other revenue. Do you want to add something on parcel tax, Tom? Okay. Other revenue, utility user tax. So very common that utility users pay a utility user tax. They pay it actually to their utility provider, so smud. City of GALT doesn't charge, has not implemented any of these. So users of smud utilities here in the city of GALT do not pay a utility user tax at all. Cities within Sacramento County that do collect this tax, their rates are between 2.25 and 2.6, um, excuse me, 7.5. So if you're in the county, I forget what the rate is, but it's, 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 it's good. Do you remember the rate on the county? I don't either. I want to say it's 7.5, but I could be wrong. The average is 2.11, just based on the fact that there, there are certain cities within this county that don't collect. And so that kind of brings the average down. For every 1% of UUT, oh, I'm sorry, I missed per capita. Per capita in the county is $61 annually. So it's not, and, and per capita obviously is per person in a household. So UUT for 1%, the tax would be approximately 700,000. But again, it would require the evaluation of some specialists to determine. UUT is partly a rate on usage, and so as usage varies throughout cities within the county, there could be some fluctuation in that. So under this scenario, the evaluation could eliminate the, the general fund deficit in favor of funding for parks and rec and lighting and landscape. Again, you know, the council could determine that the LLDs, instead of being modified, they could either be modified, eliminated, or put in, in, sistering up with some of these. So to summarize, what we're interested in is a discussion and direction from council on what staff can do next to evaluate these long-term revenue enhancements. We're really trying to avoid insolvency. And we have other measures in place, we talked about earlier today, the market plan, et cetera, that will help in the long term. But these are actions that would need to be taken in the shorter term. Still considered long-term actions, but in a, in a shorter timeframe. So again, the target is 1.4 million annually. Obviously, that goes up over time. The options are potentially sales tax of 0.5 would solve that. Parcel tax, $200 per parcel would solve that. CFD, that would need some evaluation to figure out whether that really solves the entire problem or is in combination with something else. And then utility users' tax would probably be 2%, potentially higher, depending on the evaluation. Each of these revenue measures would require participation from the community and placement of a measure on the ballot. So the typical preparatory steps in considering a ballot measure, if one of these were to be entertained, would be, obviously, community presentations. And those would need to start soon. Clear communication as to the types of services to be funded. So obviously, on the top of everybody's mind is parks and rec. But there may be other things. We've talked about some capital needs, the pool. You know, do we really want to have a pool long-term? And if so, we don't have the funding to do those repairs. Polling to assess the voter, the voter opinions. So do, do the voters really think, you know, I'd rather pay, I'd rather pay the higher sales tax because that's people traveling in and out of the city, not just me? Or would I rather pay the parcel tax and know exactly what that is? You know, it would be important to know what the voter's opinion is of, of these options. And then obviously, professional election expertise to guide this city and decision-making process would be desirable. So at this point, we're interested in a discussion, direction. What's your pleasure?
I got a few questions. So, in reading through this packet kind of throughout the meeting. So, just talking out loud, I mean, the CFD to me clearly needs to be, I mean, we have people that don't pay at all in LLD, which is kind of, in my opinion, unfair. I don't pay in it. Where I live, in this little weird spot where I don't pay. So I don't think it's fair that people don't pay. However, if we were to level the playing field on that, which I feel like should be done anyways, in the essence of fairness, and you could say, well, somebody doesn't have a park in their neighborhood or whatever, but it's lighting and landscape, so it's, it's also landscaping and everything else. It's not just if you have a park next to you. So I think in all fairness, everybody else should pay. But based on your numbers, it's only like $82,000. Because LLD one is, I forget which one is West Side or East Side's in deficit, 68,000, and the other one's deficit 14,000?
So a community facilities district is a little bit different than a lighting and landscape district.
Right, I get it. I understand the difference. But what I'm saying is, but right now, those two, the two LLDs that are in deficit only make up only $82,000 on the general fund. So if we were to correct that, you're saying the CFD would not only correct that deficit, but actually would supplement additional money that we take in?
Absolutely, it could.
Okay. So then I look at the sales tax, parcel tax. I mean, nobody wants to pay more property tax. I mean, it's like one of the highest things. The sales tax, I was curious, I Googled sales tax in other cities. LLD is at 825, Elk Grove's at 7.75, which is quite a bit lower than us. Sacramento is actually a little higher than us. So looking at our neighbors to the north and the south, which would be Elk Grove, LLD, I'm thinking, if people shop where they're probably shopping at now, for the most part, they're getting a better deal than they are here. So for us to increase our sales tax higher, I mean, would we scare people away from shopping here in town? I don't know. Is 0.5 going to scare them away? Do people really pay attention to that? I mean, they're already, I think about big-ticket items like cars. I mean, if you go buy a car in Elk Grove, you're going to pay sales tax, I think, where you live anyways, if I'm not mistaken. So, so we would capture that money anyways. Plus, I think the sales tax would probably, I don't know, be the lesser of the evils as far as like people on fixed income and things, because, you know, your property taxes, you have to pay no matter what. Your utilities, you know, if you want to keep the lights on. But your, you know, your sales tax, you're out there buying stuff. Well, people that are doing well, they're buying more things and they can afford it. People that aren't doing well, they just buy less, they're not spending as much sales tax. So I feel like that would be the lesser of the evils. I don't know, these are just my thoughts out loud. I mean, the, the utilities thing, I mean, smud is, I don't know, my smud bill's high. But I don't know, 2%, I don't know what that would look like on the average bill. So, I don't know. This is my input on, my thoughts on these. Anybody else got any thoughts?
Anybody else?
I have, I have lots of thoughts. I, I think that, well, first of all, let me just put it out there. I've done this, I've put it out there before. I am not a tax person. I think that government in general needs to learn to live within their means. And so, so just from a philosophical perspective, I am not for additional taxes. I will say this, and I've mentioned this piece before too. We pay, where I live currently in the city, I pay $99.44 a year for lighting and landscape. And anybody that lives out in that, that district up in the northeast, that's what we pay. And that's the, that's the level of, just as of last summer, that's the level of service we're getting for, for that, for what we pay. In fact, I would submit that we're still getting a little bit more service on our lighting and landscape areas than $99.44 a year. So I think the real question is this. What have we done, just as it relates to lighting and landscape? What have we done to reduce our costs over time? And one of the things that was mentioned in the presentation was we have renegotiated a lighting landscape, or a landscape contract for service one time a month. And in my meeting with the city manager, prior to this meeting, we talked about the growing season is coming and it's not going to look good. And, and honestly, I have more pride in my city than that. And I would say that if somebody were to ask me, would you be willing to pay more in that arena? I would, I would say absolutely yes. But I'm not the entire public. So what I think, and again, I'm just addressing this one piece of this right now. What I think we need to do here in the near future, probably, we probably should have done it already as an organization over time, but, you know, priorities are different. But I think what we need to do is look at our turfed areas, whether they be parks or light, or, or landscape corridors, or whatever it is. Look at those turfed areas and see what we can do to reduce the cost of maintenance on them. Now, is that going to make up the difference between our $99.44 a year and what we really need? Probably not, but I think it's a good way to put a good step forward to say, this is what, the, these are the other things we're doing to reduce our costs. And, and I've mentioned this a couple of times in meetings here, that I think what we need to do is look at some drought-tolerant landscaping throughout those areas and come up with a plan on what we're going to do. Now, I recognize it's going to take money to change that over, but in the long term, you're spending less water, less fertilizer, less mowing. And hopefully, that will reduce our costs a little bit because I believe that we have a responsibility to the citizens to do what we can within our means. And again, I recognize it's not going to take care of the entire situation. But if we at least attempt to do that, or at least begin that process, I think people would be much more willing to be open to looking at other things. And so it really is, the, the question I think that's before us today is more of, is it, is, is what we're providing the city a service that is acceptable? And, and some arenas, no. And I just mentioned the one regarding the landscape corridors and, and park maintenance. And so what it, by, by beginning down this road, I think that that will begin to have us do our part. And we've, and we've done a lot in this last year. I mean, I don't know how many times we've had, had to make tough decisions on, on, you know, fees and, and things like that. But on the other hand, just because we can charge a tax, doesn't mean we should. And so I'm not totally closed off to voting to put something on the ballot. But I think that we, we certainly should do more on our end. And I, I just use that one example that, that I just talked about to, to try to reduce our costs. And I think that in, in the last, second to last slide, or no, it is the last slide here, where it says our, our goal is 1.4 million annually. That's this year. As it relates to moving forward, that 1.4 million becomes then 1.45 million, let's say. And because the cost of services goes up. And so I think that we can't just look at what it's going to, what will this long-term solution fix today. We need to really look out, you know, five, 10, 15 years down the road to see what it really looks like. And again, I don't necessarily have a preference on any of it. I think the, 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 the most fair is a, is sales tax. But I don't know that the community could, could increase sales tax either. So those are just some of my thoughts. I have many more, but I'd like to hear also from my colleagues.
Tom Lamson?
Yeah. Nobody wants to see fee increases or tax increases, and, and I am right there with them. That being said, this council's going to be faced with the options of reducing services or not providing those services. And whether those services are, we don't mow, or we don't water in order to maintain those landscape areas. You know, that's not today, that's not tomorrow, but that's something that is- not tomorrow, but that's something that is certainly, you know, an option for us to have to consider down the road. Reduction in programs, recreation, every department. I mean, that's really what we're looking at. So, not wanting to impose new taxes or fees, I think at the same time, there has to be a balance. And that balance, and I think a lot of it will have to do with timing. Whether the community is receptive to any one of these proposals is going to be tied to timing, and what are the precise circumstances of the city's budget, of the service level. I think there's a less likelihood that we're going to see a willingness to increase sales tax, or impose a citywide CFD, if everything seems to be going along okay. Because that's, that's the perception. And until, I think, the public feels what is truly the budget crisis we have, there's going to be less of a willingness to self-impose these fees and rates. But I think, in looking at them, and these are just my thoughts, and I'm not sure about timing, but I think a sales tax as a ballot measure, the city council is not imposing it. We are giving the residents the opportunity to either self-impose or not. I think there are benefits to that extent to meaning, and that can be demonstrated in providing information to the public, what the outside benefit is, you know, the traveling public, you know, gas stations, restaurants along the freeway, they have the ability, in certain cases, to filter that information out. So, I think that we would be, you know, capturing a sales tax beyond that, which is just solely generated within the community. Secondly, my thought on a CFD is, because there are, you know, just certain areas of the city that have a CFD, the whole northeast area is covered by one, and then several areas on the west side, and I, too, am one of those properties that is not included. Actually, the development was before we even did CFDs, which is the reason there's no LL Lighting Landscape District on it. But I think if we were to look at what a cost, what the cost would be to maintain parks and rec, lighting landscaping, and lighting applies citywide, landscape corridors throughout the city, and then look at a uniform basis, on a per parcel basis throughout the city, we may see some reductions, say, in the northeast area, where it may be more palatable for someone to look at that. But again, I don't know those numbers, but I think that we should at least evaluate those. So, those are kind of my thoughts. I don't, a partial tax, I just don't, I don't see it happening. But again, I'm no expert. Utility user tax, my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, that would just be based on our utility fees, water, sewer, storm drain, those sorts of things. Is that where that would be generated?
It's actually generated on the utility through smud.
It is through smud, then?
So, it would be a tax that the voters would approve, that smud would charge on our behalf.
Okay. I think with any one of these, I think polling is going to be incredibly important, because, you know, the residents of the community may be willing to spend more money in parks and rec by some, by one of these mechanisms, rather than simply a utility user tax, or a parcel tax. So, I think, you know, polling would be critically important for, at least for me, to help me make a decision on which one, would one stand the best chance, and, you know, which way, which line we should pursue. So...
So, Claire, do you know if we impose, or if they, the voters impose the smud tax, how much would that, would that generate the deficit?
It's variable.
Probably around two to three percent would. Again, we would want to bring someone in who could really evaluate, not only what the, you know, the polling and the voters' preferences, but also refine these numbers.
And then on the CFD, I'm already, I'm in a lighting landscape. I think I'm paying more than all of us.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So, if we were, could we increase the northeast side if we did a new CFD? Are they stuck in that one from the nineteen-nineties?
Well, so you have a bunch of options that are possible. You could, you could do an increase to the existing lighting landscape district. You could put out a citywide, or in lieu of that, you could put out a citywide CFD that is designed to say, well, here's all our costs for parks and maintenance and the like, to even include programming, if you wanted, and come up with a new figure of what that would take for everybody within the city. Then everybody's on that level playing field, if you will. It could be, a CFD could be advanced as a vote of the people, you know, a vote on a ballot. And so, you could potentially then do away with the lighting landscape districts. And so, it's really revise and replace, so to speak.
Okay.
You could do the same thing with a parcel tax. You could ask for a parcel tax sufficient to provide all of that revenue on an equal basis for everybody, and then do away with the LLDs. But the key is, in whatever you structure, structuring it such that if you were to eliminate the LLDs, that you would still have enough money to be able to do everything. And then you could articulate to the community the types of things that you would intend to fund with that. But one of the, one of the interesting features of all of that is the vote threshold necessary to achieve success. So, a general tax, that is a tax in which you don't specify where it's going to necessarily go, is fifty percent plus one.
Plus one.
A specific tax, this is going to go for parks maintenance. This is going to go for some other thing. That's a two-thirds vote.
So, CFD would have to be a two-thirds vote?
No.
Is that what you're saying, or no?
Not necessarily.
Not necessarily, okay.
Yeah. I think it's all in how you design it. And so, that's just a function of the law, you know, the voter threshold. And so, sometimes polling gives you a window into what type of measure you're going to need, you know, to go for. A lot of times, sales tax are kept general. One of the reasons why they can be kept more general is that it is the lower voter threshold. But you're also, hopefully, encouraging people who visit your city, freeway traffic, stopping for gas, stopping for, you know, something at a fast food place, or whatever, to help raise your tax base. And clearly, people who live in town would be, would be affected by it as well. That's, that goes without saying. But you begin to try to figure out what, how it is you might package something, one for the community, to say, this is our community vision. We want to be able to do these things. And, but here's, here's the problem we have. And with us, we come at it not from necessarily doing something that's new, but doing it in order to maintain financial solvency. Because what we can't do for very long is incur deficits. And so, what we're faced with over the long term, like it or not, is that in order to balance the budget, which you'll receive a proposed budget later this spring, and it will be a balanced budget, will, will we, the question in my mind is, what will we need to cut, or will we need to cut additional services in order to achieve that budget balance? Because we have certain costs that increase. We may be under contract, or whether it's landscaping, or some other thing that we do to provide service to the public, those contracts usually contain escalators. The smud rate is likely to go up. The, you know, PG&E natural gas is likely to contribute to increases. And so, we have some of those market forces that work against us as we try to balance the budget year over year. And so, that comes with that question. Will we need to reduce something we do further in order to present a balanced budget?
So, my thought, I agree with Vice Mayor Lozano about reducing. Looking at some of the ways you can raise money. Now, if you look at utility tax, two percent. If your bill's two hundred dollars, that's four dollars. It doesn't sound like a lot, but everybody has to have utilities. You can reduce your sales tax by not buying as much stuff. So, that's kind of a not-on-everyone tax that, so if someone has a really low income and isn't buying a lot of stuff, or barely making it, they're, they won't be taxed that much. So, that's kind of what I'm thinking.
You're also capturing sales tax dollars from people in the county. Us being a rural community, we get a lot of money from the county.
Yes, we do.
A nine percent sales tax is substantial. We'd be at nine percent. That's high. I mean, that's like, would people stop going, like, are people going to quit going to Starbucks to buy coffee because they're paying nine percent? Probably not. I mean, most people don't really think about it.
They don't charge taxes.
I think we'd be at eight-seven-five, but eight-point-seven-five.
We're at eight-point-two-five. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the wrong one.
And they don't charge taxes at Starbucks, right?
No. Well, you get my point, though. A lot of people are not going to change their spending habits because of a point-five sales tax.
No.
Right, right. And then with the gas and everything. So, that's where I'm leaning, not sold on anything yet, but that's, that's my thought.
Mr. Mayor?
You know, certainly, I agree with my colleagues. Nobody want, including myself, we don't want to increase any tax, on a property tax, on sale tax, whatever cost is increasing. Especially, we need to revenue increase one way, the other, to find some way. And then also, Vice Mayor Lozano, he bring a good cost reduction. That's also a very important part of the budget. We're looking for the revenue increase. We also look, have to look at everywhere where we can cost decrease. So, I'm talking about, I'm looking these two things, like in LLD and CFD, and then also on the sale tax. Sale tax, one side, I do understand we can get, but we don't want to be the customer out there, where they're not buying the thing, then we can lose all over the revenue from the city. And then especially this, I believe, these item, in order to process, we need to put on a wallet, wallet, right? We need to put on a wallet, right? We have to...
Yes.
And especially, we need to, you know, some kind of valuation. I certainly want to be feedback or outreach to this community. You know, we want something, it will pass on the wallet. We don't want something, spend the money, and it does not look like it pass to the wallet. So, I'm certainly, you know, looking something, as, whatever is more review, more valuation on these couple items. Thank you.
Just one last thing, real quick. Look, we all put our opinion, and we all think, you know, this might be better, or whatever. But ultimately, I agree with whatever everybody said here, Kurt and Rich. You know, some of these are going to be tough to get through the public. I think the thing is, what is the public willing to sacrifice? Is the public willing to have their parks only mowed ever so often? Is the public willing to give up sports, sports programs? Are they willing to maybe have a police officer or two less on the street? I mean, there's a lot of things that GALT really enjoys, but those things come at a price. So, I think it's going to come down to whether the public, what the public is willing to pay for what they want. But I think the bigger picture here is, clearly, that what Rich said is, to pass any of this stuff, the public has to feel that their city has done its diligence in living within its means. If the public feels that we have done our diligence, and cutting where we can cut, and try to save where we can save, they're probably going to be way more apt to agreeing to something and paying more on their behalf. If they don't believe that's true, if they don't feel that way, this stuff doesn't have a chance. And that's why, you know, living within our means is important. It's like Rich said, you know, we might fix this now, but if we don't, if we don't learn to live within our means, you know, you know, it's just like, it's like Elk Grove, is, you know, this huge city, and they have a budget problem. I mean, it's like, you grow, and it's like a vicious circle. You get more money, and then you just spend more money. You get more money, and you spend more money. So, if we don't live to, if we don't learn to live within our means, it doesn't matter what we do now, in four or five years, we'll be right in this back in situation. So, you know, getting our spending under control is the most important. People have to trust that we and the city have made the hard choices. And if they feel like they have, then they're going to be willing to make some choices. I think that the public has made some hard choices already on their behalf. But I agree with polling. I think, I would like to see this go out to a poll. I think that the city can maybe do like a newsletter, or maybe even something that doesn't cost any money, like maybe a social media poll on the city's webpage with no commenting, just a simple poll. What would you be willing to do? Maybe give some quick little breakdown. I mean, people aren't even watching this meeting tonight, so that's the bad part. But if we were to just say, this is what this would mean. If you have a utility bill, it's a hundred dollars, it would mean paying a hundred and two. If you currently pay a thousand dollars for property tax, you'd be paying twelve hundred. Or, if you don't pay a lighting and landscape, you'd not be paying when it's going to cost you a hundred dollars a year. What would you be willing to do? Simple poll. You could get a lot of early information off something like that, and even maybe, you know, in the city newsletter by paper, just, you know, give them a link to go to the website and, you know, put their input. But if we could kind of get the feel of the public before we try to pursue anything. But ultimately, all we're going to do, for those of you that are watching, is, all we're going to do is just decide, you know, based on some polling, or some kind of, something, what we want to push forward. And ultimately, it's going to be the public to decide. We're not going to decide any of the stuff we're talking about. We don't have the power to do that. So, I just want to be clear. So, before I start hearing about, council's going to raise sales tax.
I have a question of staff. When I looked at this polling to assess voter opinions, I assumed that that would be a professional outside firm to conduct a statistically valid...
That's right. I mean, typically, well, that's the way those things proceed. Because really, to make a decision, to fully inform yourself, you need to have a statistically valid poll that can help you understand the thresholds, and, and the types of things that the public are interested in and not interested in. And so, that's how that proceeds as a, as a matter of best practice view, were to take a look at just about, you know, any, any city that puts something on the ballot. It is very rare that they do it without polling, or without, then if they do polling, then it's a firm that does it for you. And it does come with a cost. I mean, so there, along with, you know, the next item is professional elections expertise. And so, though, you know, when we passed Measure R in this city, the city hired the Lou Edwards Group.
Yeah.
And they helped to guide and steer how, the best way in which to proceed with that particular election. And when it comes down to it, it's all footwork at the end. But the important part is coming up with that clear message, helping to guide the discussion on, or exactly what it is you want to advance to the community that would be funded by this, this new revenue, why it's important for the community, that sort of thing. Now, one of the things about all of this is the timing. We have time. We have time to methodically walk through this process. You don't need to make a decision today, tomorrow, next week, next month, the month after, even the month after that. But when you're considering the potential of putting a ballot measure out, you, you want to do the best job you can, first of all, defining for your community what you think would be, as a council, the most likely avenue. Is it a sales tax? Is it a parcel tax? Is it UUT, or something like that? Is it UUT or something like that? And get into the nitty gritty. I think it would be good to even hear from someone like the Lou Edwards Group about the other things that you need to consider as a council. They, they and other groups like them operate elections. They can, they might be able to give you a bevy of information that you either say, mm, no, you know, that, no, we're not interested, or, oh, okay. You're breaking it down into some component parts. The one thing I know that, having worked with Lou Edwards myself, that they're gonna tell you, is that the first bullet's the most important. You have to, a city has to get out to the community, has to present the needs to the community, because after all, it's the community's money. It's the community's expenses, and it's the expenses that the community wants. And it's not a nameless, faceless organization that comes up with the budget. It's based on what the community is demanding. And back in 2008, the community passed Measure R, and because they wanted enhanced police services. And by comparison of other cities our size that don't have a Measure R component, our police services are enhanced. They truly are, and it's been good for the community. So, you know, I would caution about not going about this haphazardly, but instead, maybe figuring out, are there items here, whether it's sales tax, or UUT, or parcel tax, or combination parcel tax, CFD, you know, is it, what are those things you're more interested in receiving more information about? And to include, Councilmember Farmer had a, made a comment that, you know, what about a higher sales tax? Are people less inclined to shop in this community? Or do they really pay attention to whether it's 8.25 or 8.75? There are studies that we can bring you on that sort of thing. So, if you, if there are questions on any of these items, that we can provide further information and clarification, independent, that will help you in your evaluation, that would be important. Because ultimately, you don't need to decide to put something on the ballot until probably into July. Probably at your first meeting in July, you're gonna wanna know, because you have to file all the election paperwork 88 days prior. And that's gonna be in August, prior to the election. So, that's gonna be in August. But if we're gonna, you know, clearly waiting till then is no problem, but let's use our time wisely, and begin to really dig in to what these would provide, get a sense of what the community may think about them as well. As for polling, that's probably coming later. That would come later, after we've developed the community presentation, we've been around the community, we're talking about it, we're continuing to talk about it at council meetings, so that they have at least the value of a bit of that education or understanding of our financial situation and what we face, in order to then make a thoughtful answer as to whether or not they would support some tax measure.
And then that valuation of this one, how we gonna do it? We can, what the process? Are we gonna do something at first in a local level with the staff level, reach to the community, or we can hire a firm? I like to...
No, I think staff level for the community. I think we've gotta talk to our own, our own public. Yeah.
I don't know about the balance of council, but I would like to see staff maybe develop a little more information on each one of these options, and point out to council what they see as the, you know, the benefits, or the pitfalls, or the difficulties, or the, you know, just a, just kind of a, just a little bit more in-depth analysis of how they would be implemented, what the revenues would be. I mean, for discussion purposes, I think that's, that's important to have that information.
And ask the pros and cons.
Yes.
That some of us are talking about, like, well, this one, you know...
Yeah. I mean, and from staff's perspective. I mean, you know, not to go out and, but I think, I think we clearly have to have an understanding of, number one, what it is. I mean, some of them are pretty obvious, but, you know, like on the parcel tax, whether it's a 50% or a 2/3 vote, and, you know, what limitations or restrictions are there. Same with CFD, you know. I know you have more latitude because you can include programs, as you were talking about, as well as capital. I mean, so there, you know, I know there's flexibility, but I think it would be easy, it'd be nice to be able to see a comparison to each one, and what the thresholds are.
Sure.
So, we can table that next meeting, or...
Is that...
Yeah, we don't have an action item associated. Well, it's just to provide us the type of direction that you're talking about here. What are you interested in? What do you wanna see more information on?
I think staff come back with more info. That's my...
Yeah, we agree.
And I wrote just a couple more notes. I agree, more info, you know, on each of the, not proposals, each of the options.
Yeah.
Couple of things I just wanted to note before we move on. I wanna say that I think our city has done a great job at utilizing Measure R. And so, this is a little plug for finance and the police department related to the sales tax measure. I think we have fulfilled our obligation and continue to fulfill our obligation to the community as it relates to that. I would really, in this process, I'd really look for extreme community input, very similar to how we have gone out and are gonna get feedback on other items that are before us. But that, I think, is gonna be real important. The other piece, I think, is more important, are stakeholder groups. You know, it's gonna be important that the chamber and the labor organizations and nonprofit organizations all get this information firsthand from staff on what it means and what we're trying to do. And then I think we look to our neighbors like Lowdi, just a year ago passed a sales tax, or I think it was sales tax, or was it general?
It was a...
Yeah. So anyhow, but at least look to them and say, hey, what worked? And what were your pitfalls? And what were you looking to do? And then I just wanna go back to this lighting and landscape things. As you guys can probably figure out, it's a little bit of a berm I cross. We really, really need to, and I would ask for support from my colleagues on this, to give staff direction to do that evaluation of our landscape corridors and see what we can do differently, as well as our park facilities, to see what we could do differently in terms of reducing costs. And I gave one example of maybe drought tolerant landscaping and things like that. And then the other piece is looking to either, I'm just gonna put it out there, the school districts, whoever mows their lawns, how does that happen? Is it a private contract? If it isn't, is there a way we can combine resources to reduce our costs for maintenance? And then, and then the consumers, CSD, they mow parks every day, and we need to reach out to them and say, what can we do to partner? Is there a way to partner, piggyback on your contract? Will it work? Again, at the end of the day, if the answer's no, it's no. But I think we really need to look at that and have every option evaluated to reduce costs before going to the community. And that's it.
Is there a consensus of the council for what...
Yeah. I can tell you, the high school district hires, they have their own personnel that mow and do all the maintenance.
See if they wanna mow our lawns.
Full-time employees.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, consensus?
The council have a consensus to...
So, you're looking for a consensus to have staff do what Rich said?
I just say...
In conjunction with the polling, is that what...
Yeah, something separate from the polling, I think...
Not the polling, but the, I'm sorry, the additional information is what they're asking for from staff, right?
Correct. And that would be additional information with that thought process that we're gonna try to reduce our costs in that arena. And again, if the high school district has their own folks that mow, will, can we pay them a less, you know, a particular, we entered MOU with them to mow our lawns? Or at least look at that. I don't know.
Rich, is that something you want coming back with the same information, or is this something more that staff would look at for purposes of evaluation as part of the budget?
Yes.
Which would be a little bit more...
No, you know, it may take some time, but, you know, quite honestly, I've mentioned it several times.
Yeah.
And it's, and now we're talking about, you know, raising taxes. And I, and again, I just think that that's gonna be a good, a big piece of what we do is showing that we're trying to do what we can to reduce it. Now, I would leave it up to the city manager to determine whether or not workload and all those things, workflow is gonna be, I mean, if you can come back with this, that would be great. If not, maybe shortly after.
Okay.
Yeah, and then that was, that was gonna be my question, you know, knowing the myriad of issues we have going right now.
Right.
Whether, whether that could, we could put that into more of a budgetary schedule, or, you know, as part of the annual budget. One other question I had, and it's not necessarily a question, whether we could get some additional information on the polling, just whatever's available that, I'm just thinking that's just additional information that we would have for purposes of that report.
I'm kinda thinking in, I could certainly get costs of that.
Okay.
But I think that, well, cost is obviously important. I think it might benefit you to have a presentation...
Presentation?
From Lou Edwards, if we can get them to come in. I go to them just because they did it for the city before. They're familiar with GALT to that extent. And if that's something the council's interested in, I think that Catherine Lu can speak better and probably shorter, to the issue of polling and the importance of the type of polling than staff could, or that I could.
Does council wanna...
What's the cost of that?
I don't know that there would be a cost.
Oh, could you...
Why not do it?
Yeah.
Yeah. I'd love to hear that.
I don't think that would have to be tied to the report on what we asked for, but just whenever.
Right. I see this as that effort, you know, this ongoing effort to evaluate. All we're doing is evaluating options and process, because process does play a role in all of this. And we're on, we can really be kind of on a true, two-track approach. So, clearly, we're putting together the next two-year budget. And to Vice Mayor Lozano's point, as we're doing that, I think we'll clearly be able to demonstrate to the community everything we're doing to come in with a balanced budget, everything we're doing to reduce expenditures. And at the same time, then, we can talk to the community about the potential for a revenue measure and what that would fund for them.
I think, I think, Mr. Lozano, you're actually looking at specific issues. Is that in addition to, or, we don't know what the budget, what's coming in the budget yet.
Right. Yeah, I would say in addition to, again, it just appears to be low-hanging fruit to me in terms of what we can do. Now that, not that it will be, not, not that it won't be labor-intensive to some degree, but we have so many resources around us that I believe we should be asking to see what kind of assistance they could provide. You know, I think a couple meetings ago, I mentioned it. You know, I love our city, and I think we do a good job in most every area of service, but I think we're missing the boat when we don't, when we try to be an island, figuratively, because, you know, for all intents and purposes, we are an island. But when we try to do it in a silo, it just, I think we're just doing more damage than good. And so, right, why not use our partners, both, you know, private and public, to assist us?
Any other discussion among the council member? Any public comment?
Can't you just put page two online? I just a question.
Jay was coming.
I'll try. Go ahead and get some.
Good evening, once again. I'm pretty sure I'm right, but I just wanted to double-check. On the four things for the taxes, only two of them showed that they would need a fall, be on the ballot for the fall. The last two didn't actually state that on the slide. You might wanna correct that, just for anybody that would think it'd come otherwise. And then, you know, everybody, I don't know if you're doing it intentionally, but lots of the talk about each tax is done as a specific line item. You might wanna consider doing a quarter for each item, so that it's spread more evenly, you know. That might be just a better idea. And also, if you're gonna, you know, the only, I'm not really down with taxes either, but if you're gonna, it would seem fair that everybody's paying an equal amount for the services that are provided, but be cautious of areas where there's just elderly, that, you know, if you wanna suicide something, that'll be the easiest way on the planet to do it. And then, is it possible to do a gasoline tax only? And the reason I ask that is, would that provide more revenue from outside customers, from people outside the city as pass-through along the highway? It may be a way to supplement the city without actually attacking the citizens as much. And then, since we're talking about setting taxes, keep this in the back of your mind that as this market plan is presented, do you have the opportunity to set taxes as you please for the long-term future of our city? So, it's not just as it is, but, you know, think ahead, maybe a little higher, whatever, I don't know, but, you know, it's an opportunity to gain revenue for the future. And then, you mentioned at the end, the budget. People will not vote for the tax if they don't think it's a necessity. So, here, we're obviously in a budget struggle. Presenting the struggles and the problems with our present budget to the public is not only necessary, but required if you hope to do anything with taxes. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Gene Deppleport.
I say a hotel tax. Just kidding. You know, when you, Rich, I gotta take issue with what you said about your fee at 99.44, 99.80, whatever that is, a year, and saying that's comparable, that's good. You know, you equate that to like, a quarter a month. So, could you mow your lawn for that? I mean, that just doesn't, you know, doesn't segue over to your issue. But that being said, we're talking about these taxes and everything. I think we're at a point where it's too late in the year to kickstart this to get on the November ballot, because you will lose. You will absolutely lose. You don't have time to inform the public. So, I mean, any, I think that's what you'll find out when they, when you go forward with this. But rather than a tax situation, on the assessments now per home, like he's paying 99, if we look at this as a budgetary item, can you look at what it would cost each household to up their annual fee to level that? I mean, what would that be? Put that on paper, so we can see that, and see what kind, what we're looking at. Then you can, you can look at taxes down the road if you want, but this way, I think you're, I think more people would be involved, and I think more people would be agreeable to say, okay, they're gonna up it by 50 bucks a year, or $80 a year, I can live with that, because you're taking a different approach to it. And everybody in the city knows that we have issues with our L&Ms. Everybody knows. I mean, whether you're informed on city policy or not, because you can see the deficiencies in everything that's going on in the city. But I don't think paving over and doing stuff like that is, are gonna fix the problem, because I like what we have. Our mediums are nice. Those things are nice. Whether they mow once every three weeks, or every four weeks sometimes, I don't like. I think we should at least put it on a rotating basis. But the fact is, what would it cost for us to kind of level the field and look at where we can breathe a little bit in a lump sum per house, rather than a tax? When you say tax, everybody's gonna take a, you know, position, usually no. And if you're not in favor of a tax, you're not in favor of taxing people... And if you're not in favor of a tax, you're not in favor of taxing people, why would you be supporting this body, putting it forward to the taxpayer? Because, I mean, if you're not a tax person, no. Just say, no, we'll find a way to do this.
So let me respond, Mr. Davenport. I, I don't think I meant to articulate that $99.44 a year was enough. I mean, clearly isn't. We're mowing once a month now. It, it just isn't enough money. And, and it's not acceptable to me. I would, if you were to ask me, I would pay $300 a year.
There it is.
You know, I, I just would. Because that's what I want in my community. I, I don't, to your second point about paving over things, I'm talking about landscape, you know, different landscaping, not, not concrete or.
But you didn't define it. When you say that, people are going to take that and kind of run with it.
Yeah. And so what I mean is drought tolerant landscaping, and I think I used that term, but, you know, maybe at the ends of our, our corridors, having a little bit more of that, so you reduce the amount of turf. Again, it's not going to take care of the entire problem.
Right.
But I, I think if we at least look at those things and say, hey, you know, we, we tried this, we did reduce it by 3% or whatever it is, we are going to be doing our part to help, you know, with the issue.
Right. But I would like to see them put something out to where would, what, what would we have to do as independent households to up that fee for the L&Ls, to make it viable and, and maintain itself a little bit?
I think, and I don't mean to get into discussion with you, Mr. Davenport, but, but I think, I think the additional piece of this is, is L&L is one piece of this. I don't know, even if we, even if we took care of that on a, in a, by itself, I don't think we would take care of the entire problem.
Absolutely, but it's a start.
It is, absolutely.
Thank you, Gene. So next agenda item is city clerk, any report?
Nothing.
The comment by staff, Ms. Tyson.
Thank you for a great discussion, and thank you for your support, continued support on the IT recovery.
Mr. Salin.
Yeah, I'd just like to report that we are now the owners of 140 Enterprise Court, the transit facility, I think that somebody mentioned earlier. Yes, it closed last Wednesday. And just wanted to extend a, a great, you know, gratitude and thanks toward our staff and, and Kimberly and Josh at BBK as well in getting everything together. We, we had a tight deadline and we got it done. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rice.
Just real quick on the other components of the California Energy Commission grant. We do have the Climate Action Plan coming forward soon. I think I dropped off copies of the initial study and the plan in your box. We do plan on bringing that to Planning Commission in February for a recommendation, and then you, bring it to you in council in March. The other part, the Corillian Boulevard Master Plan, we're working on the environmental document, putting the finishing touches on it. We're hoping to get that out to the public in February, and then, if we can, to Planning Commission in March, and then to you in April.
Thank you. Stephanie Van Steiner, first of all, welcome and congratulations to the new job.
Yes, thank you for the welcome, Mayor and City Council. I'm Stephanie Van Steine, the new HR Director, and I'm on week three. I just started January 6th, but I do have a phone and I have an email, so.
Wow, the new person to call.
Great. Thank you for the warm welcome.
Mr. Solis.
No, thank you.
Chief.
Couple of quick items. Tomorrow's Measure R meeting is canceled. And, but the public safety meeting on the 27th at 6:00 at the PD is still a go. And then finally, our Sergeant Arms back there, that's Officer Jasper Wong. He is the drug-free California record holder of squats at the weight of 705 pounds.
At one?
And when I, yeah, all at one time. And when I asked him, I said, 705 pounds, that's, that is incredible. And he goes, yeah, that's not even my best squat. My best squat is 722. So I was paying attention to you. So that is a, he, he's a record holder in the state of California.
Mr. Haglund. You already have lot. City Attorney.
Nothing further, thank you.
Councilmember campaign.
Nothing.
Nothing.
Vice Mayor Lozano.
I just have one thing, just as a reminder, on the 31st, Friday, the 31st, the Chamber is hosting Winter Bird Festival, beer, wine, beer and food event. So get your ticket.
Is that next Friday or this Friday?
Councilmember Farmer.
Welcome, and, yeah. They're not all three hours. This is supposed to be a small meeting. I just wanted to say, I went to the Kevin Ton Memorial, we have, that was, happened since the last meeting, and I know all the council was there and a lot of staff was there. So it was great to see many people show up to that still and, and honor our fallen officer. And, oh, wish everybody, continue to have a happy new year.
I also attend Officer Kevin Ton's memorial. It was a very special ceremony to all. Remember his sacrifice and honor of a fallen hero. Thank you. Have nothing further for our adjourned meeting.